Can you all still hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I had to record it.
Yeah, record me getting locked out of my computer, sorry. Having, that was so weird, I think. Having trouble with my internet connection, sorry. There we go, I got it, next slide.
Okay, so the original, this just gives you an idea of the plant and the areas, so as you're seeing now, this one is acreage. In our original study, we looked at all these plots here. And again, we jumped ahead two slides, Jeff, I think it's two slides. So everyone. Next one, next one. Next one, there you go, oh there, minute. This is what we've been asked to look at again, so the original class. Were again, all the, once you see it, don't look at appears apartment, but it's always a red. And what we've been asked to look at, once the water treatment plant expand. Is this additional area right here, right? So with the water treatment expansion, it will take out of what our original document was looking at. We were considering all this, so you're the next one slide, next after this, Jeff. We'll see there, so the point three eight is again, we're still using that in our analysis, the amendment analysis, we'll look at that this way. But we're not looking at anything from the building, essentially. Or set, yeah, set. That said. We've earned the potential for purchasing the car. And if you fly, fly back a couple of slides there, it just will highlight it. Yeah, so the idea of adding that site is, I'll say it very simply, this is. Once we take out the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, we do need. Eight additional properties somewhere to be able to meet the needs of the code in its current, which is not going to go. So even as current condition, you'll need somewhat property. And, and what we're trying to theory here is that we can do it when the first big point, that car wash problem, it is possible.
Program, sorry, you said, the program of the, of work.
Public Works.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that said, the next where we start to show the building today. So in this auction, again, if you guys are familiar enough, we did a couple of different options for public works, it was sort of an A and B. Then what we tried to do with this little study also is address A and B options, so. A and B is simply just a different configuration of the building, so on the site. A shows in taking over the car wash. And eliminating all of this down here, but still being able to use the drive. And it's again showing you that by program, by program of third means and future goals. That you can give the program requirements in on the set, and we have again. The referencing back to the original program, you see more detail, but to have office imposed, needed space imposed, building. Covering equipment, cover material, storage salt, and then of course. Up beginning design, buffers still needs some landscape buffer to hook up with. This again, still is proving that we have this area to go, we need to be regularized, and then also I haven't taken away any of the. Existing third cut, if you go a lot higher too, that's, that's. That's option A. Slide might show you.
Before you move it back.
Yeah. No, it's a, so the white underneath at the bottom, is that the two feet of plan? Was this in the future treatment plant, we were told this is the line, right, so you can't. Use any of this site, just to support a women.
So where is the, where is it on this?
It's, it's off, it's off the sliding.
Oh, okay.
Wait, right there, yeah.
So you would have the wastewater plant as it is, and then you'd leap over the rest of it and put the other part up above?
Yeah. They're all up here, public works.
No, but I think just the wastewater plant.
That'll go where the building is.
It would be expanded adjacent too, so we will, so. But they just, we're going to back with the wastewater, with the iteration facing, so at some point, we're going to need another one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just moved it, I would say.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's eliminating that building, that maintenance building, that, which is, that's why, yeah, extend that. Okay, Jeff, go back to the. But, okay, so this then gives you, we just added another layer of circulation, so the idea of the gray is. Again, streets, circulation through the site, we're watching there, one thing I don't know if anyone picked up in detail. In our studies, in all of our studies, we've been aligning. The entrance, the public works department, essentially, if you go out there now, it's really a job, you know, down here. I mean, but this alignment is much better, that advice, three wise, all that, so we've been always been doing. So that gives you a better idea of that, option A, we have. Option B. Is the same study, applied to this Jeff. Same slides here. That's why, again, potential to add the private property. Same slide, same road, and then option B is again a different configuration. It puts maintenance building up here at the quarter, and next slide, we jump to that. Again, I actually do another reminder up here, to say, that could be a potential where. Stone wise in the public works department, you know, this is made and say, come in separately, they go out. The rest is material storage, guard, big trucks, covered parking. And again, different, different ways of access to site. Yeah, so always the same options show again, ability to still come through here, again, not knowing. And sort of, you know, again, operating a maintenance with the wastewater treatment plant, so. The key in all this is to, again, I'll repeat, but you do need to find some more property. If the wastewater treatment plant is expanding to this lot. And again, key to all this study is that you can do it, you're very confident that you can do this. And we've got, again, the backup data to show that program lies, if you have, if you purchased a car wash property. Is that, do we have the recycle still there? Yes, recycle's down there, so nothing was being lost, getting shoved up, so, no, it's, it's, I think it's. And this, this thing that you have going on there, exactly, is that commercial speaking there? Yeah, it's, it's over in a bit, yeah, but, and ultimately in design, again. You guys start to see them in the forest too, but you know, this is all fenced off and open, and so. There's separation of public to private, so your public can't be private.
So speculatively speaking, how far future can this maintain our space during both? There are any points.
No, it's a report. Maybe it's a primary, I actually asked a first company, yes.
So, like, was that include the idea that, I have a big book asking in terms of, like, you definitely.
Yes.
And so you, you know, assuming a flat building, you go. Yeah. Yeah. I'll go shoot fifty thousand, thirty, three hundred or something.
Yeah, like thirty percent. No, so yeah, three hundred Sunday conference, I would. Yeah. Yeah. How big do you have to go, because we just finished the project and now it's obviously too small, are we just going to keep doing that, redoing that? With wastewater?
We didn't expand on the wastewater, but that was only. All of that.
Oh, okay.
I thought there.
Just to ask you on commercial, on option B, zero, with Commercial Street, he's in the way to enter. Anderson, Public Works Anderson, to beat it up and come to someplace else.
We, I, yeah, we all, yeah, we always were starting beating up here, including some of this and. And instead of that, this, this, I'm sure, this offers the options, and, and, sorry. Yeah, I mean, if we include this part, again, sensing wise, again, we have to talk about how. Public wants to get down, right, you always, we always were thinking that public is still coming to recessing. Right, so again, whether or not. People close off fourteen, but sometime around this question, they don't enjoy that part.
Did you, I'm, I'm just curious if you have, if you analyzed locating the offices where the car wash is, because that's a pretty. It's a highly visible property, and we can make a building look much nicer than we can make covered storage.
Yeah. We have, but let's do it, everything, don't, don't take any of this, so other than the fact that the study is telling you.
We need more space.
All that's possible. So now, we'll have to go back there, so. The plant before, the, since the time before, anything did was for three forty thousand people. And so when you go to the middle of the world, it's still for twenty thousand people.
And that's a separate project, but yes.
The phosphorus project was to meet our. Total maximum daily load for the Wenatchee River, to remove phosphorus, it actually took away some of our capacity, didn't add any capacity.
But.
I'm totally, I'm totally. Do you like, do you like going after the gas one?
So I don't know if there was any growth projection analyzed with that, however, it was just purely to and with the phosphorus. Wasn't to expand.
Yeah, I think you do that part, and that was the fact that the whole thing was.
I think what you're remembering, Sharon, is. Back in twenty ten and eleven, when we started going down the road with CNBL. We were only at something like sixty percent of the plant capacity. So we knew that we had a lot of room for growth already. But I think since then, ten years, twelve years later, there's been a lot of new development, so that has eaten away at a lot of that. Plus, the new design did take away some of that capacity too.
That's probably what.
So now we're at what percentage today?
I don't know the percentage up top of my head, but we're just getting down with the asking analysis, which you know, so we'll update it here shortly.
With that initial, the frontage office space. Initially, we built it soon, we, we, we all that space, we get the city beat, we need some space out of. And use the spaces.
Yeah, that's possible, I can use that, too, it's possible.
Okay, and then we would obviously still grow in the past.
Yeah, yeah, especially if you approach a theory, follow, follow extension, or anybody, right? But again, if you look at that, as office space, how, yeah, find that too, yeah, that's definitely.
That's some commercial, yeah. So we're still, we have to be taking it.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
Be great. Oh.
I think it's an investment.
It's, it's, could be, could be investment. Yeah, okay, yeah. But still, we have time, which we can. On potentially, yeah, reverse. South space, so.
General commercial. General commercial.
Any other?
Must get Jeff, so Jeff.
Jeff, Jeff, can you say, um, including this vice, that need?
No, I think you covered all the main points, I think, yeah, in general, we're just trying to show you that the long term. You need more property, and then you could fit things short term, but I think others have said it, are we trying to solve a problem for today? Are we trying to do it once, right? And we're trying to give you the ammunition to say you need a little more property to, to do the one thing right for the long term.
Absolutely. I'm guessing it's not near scope, but if you talk about how this could be done in cases, like the most urgent needs for public works to be attained, and. One point, so.
Hey, that would, that would be a likely next step, I was kind of rolling a design.
And again, that's an easy question, we need to find, but. Would we know what you need to grow in the next, that, and roll that for PC, other type of offices, I'm trying to understand, but.
Probably have to chunk it out, but now you need part of that, maybe after, maybe spending. Probably not, well, probably is huge, dude.
Yeah. That's.
You given an opinion about the sprung structure, you've been looking out for other. Projects, but other fire departments, public works facilities, sprung structure. And they're, they're massive, passing.
Yeah.
Pretty adaptable.
Yeah, but she wouldn't be, I mean, and we're, what we're doing a lot with these, with channel look, intervention, to be on the floor, but. We're doing a lot of, the engineering development, so you guys have some, you know, here. But in today's market, that's really, really, we're taking it forward economically, economically. The key is that, again, developing initially, we want to have a contract, we gotta be able to, this right in place, upfront. And some of it we can talk with. Before we get to the design phase, right, and just to have a visual place, because that's what we find, we can have that concentration, we have a lot of team, something. Giant part, it goes way larger, more of a design build. And because we're the design building, at least it gives us a good value, you know, cost, which. Perhaps it's below, yeah. Yeah, the standard of building is likely to be, just, if you're doing at least. I want to say three or four now, we've finished going on. Very similar campus lives. I, I was pleasantly pleased, but we did a second public study, once I heard you guys talking about the car wash, because. To have everything right here is what we're finding most missing, how we still have, if you can expand on the site, there you are. That's really, we've got, we should get other file, some of that, it's supposed to be very short.
Do you know how much acreage this parcel is, if you've added the car wash and added what we own?
I, I can give you that, I don't know that off the top of my.
I can do it in JX.
Yes. But we actually have a, you want to do, just finish, this, again, just such base with the cost, relative to the case, that you will. Who have that?
In your, the verse that you have here, we're actually a fourteen, nine, two acres.
Yeah.
Fifteen eight, yeah. Is that, that was construction, or is that?
No, that was, that was, that was just straight big, designing big, but.
And word of caution there, that doesn't include soft costs.
Yeah.
Soft costs. Sales tax, engineering, all permitting, so it's, so rough order, it was thirty million.
You would have fifty percent?
After, after engineering.
We're at, we're at, we're about now, we're probably forty, okay, we're not getting forty percent.
Forty percent for stop.
Yeah.
Oh, what about that, or right hand, whatever, I call that, what he's, what he's, that, public, I don't know, way over, very, very, yeah. But I would like, I was this. So just to the north of the, uh, school street.
Oh, that's right away.
Oh, we did it?
No, no, no.
I get a problem.
No, he's talking about outside, that's right away.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. I think that line is actually your path. You know, site line, so that is right.
That one's, but. Very steep there, oh, is that right where it dropped off?
Yeah, it's dropping down to do.
There, yeah. So the house that's there now.
It's in all those trees.
Straight in there.
Yeah, the house on the, other wood side, that's right here.
Okay.
So it's hard to see it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to recognize it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go, yeah.
Okay.
Here's a, one, two, three, about that.
This one's not the, loose, aestheticly, but they seem like, yeah, durable. Yeah, sheet, durable.
The fabrics I was doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Insulated kind of sandwich fabric.
Yeah.
Insulated.
Yeah, we, we, again, find, like, one of the portions of that site is that, of, those, again. Again, a very cross effect, especially for the tourist, yeah. Do they come in colors?
Probably, yeah.
I support one.
Yeah, because it's deep down.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be good for the exterior. Or a government that didn't.
Yeah.
The other questions?
It's Dan.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, now he's talking, what's the next step on this project?
Design face.
We'll move to the start too.
Well, that's, I mean, that, that's about discussion, yeah, but, yeah, budget, budget and design face, and obviously, car wash property.
Car wash property, and then City Hall Library, and if we are able to. Analyze Osborne and the library moves, if that's cheaper than this. For the expansion of City Hall, that might be a better option to help reduce that cost.
Are we going into that, Mike?
Yeah.
No.
So, that's next.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, on the library, guys.
There it is.
I can break down this, lots of business.
What, I'm sorry, I didn't.
The question is, let's say we, you know, we kind of get a rough idea of the ballpark, Austin, see, but we, we're. I mean, we talked about the grants.
No, this is probably likely going to end up being a general obligation bond utilizing capacity, but. We're going to use all non-voted capacity, and you're still going to have to go to voters to get them to get voted capacity used.
Yeah, that's, I didn't know what you guys were saying, you were referring to that.
Right.
That's all.
Just looking at the rough numbers, high level, it's, it's gonna take some time.
This is why we had that whole conversation at the retreat about what our bonding capacity is, and, and all the different unmet needs and wants that we have out there.
It was over two.
Two hundred and eleven, I think, as well.
I was gonna say two twelve.
So, I'll go ahead and take this, the space needs assessment also looked at adding, or also looked at the future needs required for City Hall and the library. So this is a conversation to see what the council thinks about a, some, an idea that could give us a space we need, but save a lot of money in the process. So we just talked about the public works campus, the space assessment again, cover City Hall and the library as well. What that space needs portion of report indicated was that we need more room. City Hall needs more room, and the library would like more room. They offered two different choices, just like they did with public works campus, N A and a B. Internally, staff reviewed them, and we preferred B, which has a smaller addition to the west. Than if we did all the addition to the west, it would gobble up much more of Lions Park. So we like this one, which has a smaller addition to the east and elevates the roof of council chambers. And then a smaller addition, a five thousand, fifty seven hundred square foot addition towards Lions Park. The, this is what the layout shows, and again, that we currently have seventy one hundred square feet, they're saying that we needed a total of. Proposed was eighteen thousand, sorry, with the library, we have ten thousand, they're proposing an addition of about eight thousand square feet, two additions. So this is what we have, and the cost estimate, and this is what would, could potentially look like in a nice Bavarian building, kind of balances out, it's a beautiful building, no doubt. But again, it would gobble up a significant, or gobble up some of our park. But the more concerning is the cost, option B, which is the preferred one, would cost in today's, we're, I did, twenty, twenty five dollars, thirteen point five million dollars. And that includes the soft costs, so eight point eight million for construction, sorry, where's my first, eight point eight million for construction. And then another five million, almost in soft costs.
In thirty years now.
And this would provide space for thirty years for City Hall and, and the library, so we're actually sitting in this room in a meeting, doing some training. Talking about this, and someone said to me, well, if we could just find a different place for the library to move, then City Hall could expand downstairs, and. Well, that's an interesting idea, could be much cheaper, where could we put the library? And I thought, well, I haven't been there yet at that point in time, but I heard that the library, that the Osborne School had a library in it. So I went in toward it, and it does indeed have a library in it. So this, the, the city, as you know, acquired this parcel a few years ago. They did a visioning, previous administration, or previous administration for, and stowed development strategies, did a visioning process with the community. It seemed like community wanted a community center of some sort at the property. This was concept number two, was the one that had the most support from the report that I read. Which was a twenty four hundred square foot multipurpose community center, and up to get rated playground, splash pad, et cetera. What this thing didn't say was what would actually be programmed inside that community center, it said community center. So my proposal to you is, and I ran this by the, by the mayor, we're close with the mayor. We've, before we brought this concept at all, we, I, I got a structural engineer from Gray and Osborne over to the site to see if a partial demolition would even be feasible. The report said it would, it, it appears it would be feasible to do a partial demolition. I was also brought our previous building official there, and he said, as long as we. Cut the building down to below twelve thousand square feet, we would need a sprinkler, and that's one of the larger costs of renovation. Once you change code, once you do a certain amount of, of upgrades, you have to meet fire codes and sprinklers, and that would be cost prohibitive. So that's where we landed on that number, I then reached out to ARC and asked if they could put this idea onto paper and see what a partially demolished Osborne. Would look like, so this is a site plan, this building is eleven thousand square feet. It would add some parking, although we may be able to get away with less parking than what is shown, but this is what our code currently says, is there would be forty eight parking spaces. The playground is being redeveloped, as you are all aware of, and then could add some additional ball fields, but this would be the footprint of a partially demolished Osborne. This is how it could be programmed, so right now the library has thirty three thousand square feet. This would give them thirty five hundred square feet exclusively, but then there's another six thousand square feet between. The old kitchen, which could be renovated into a commercial kitchen, which I have had feedback from people that they really want. The little gym, these are bathrooms, this is a hallway, this is the corridor you come in, and then these administrative offices and. Classrooms could be renovated, repurposed, and made into flexible space for other community needs. And if the library needed a little more room, then they can just go down to a classroom and have reading time in a classroom, but I honestly think that thirty five hundred. Would be adequate for them, after recent conversations I've had. Three thousand, so give them more, not the five thousand that they say they would like. But they said they're doing, they're actually storing fewer and fewer books on stacks, doing more of the, I want this book, and then it gets delivered to you in a couple of days. They do want room for, they want to increase their operating for technology, they want to have more computers that people can come along and use. Yep. So that's what this shows, that would be, that's the proposed or a potential footprint for it. So that's what this shows. That would be, that's the proposed or potential um footprint for it. This is a a rendering of what it could look like renovated. And I do want to point out that the idea isn't to just. Wop off half the Osborne and turn it over to the library and say, have, you know, go at it. Uh, we would have to turn over a fully renovated, modern. Properly air conditioned and, you know, heated and cooled space.
We would build it?
We would have to.
Well, the library.
And the library would decorate it, put in their stacks, put in their counters. They have.
All the interiors.
All the interior stuff. We have a contract that would be for you in a couple of weeks. We have a maintenance agreement where they pay us. Um, maintenance costs per square footage that they occupy.
I like the idea.
So this is what it could look like. Um, this is a rendering showing what the library could look like, and this is what it kind of looks like. Now, uh, meaning the 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 counter is over here on the left, this appropriate uh appropriate dimensions. And then the gym could be repurposed. Um, I know that there's a. A lot of desire for people to play pickleball indoors, so that's why I had our A R C put level with pickleball there. It could be both. That would be multipurpose. Yeah. Um, I know that Eleven More Summer Theater has expressed interest for having indoor spaces to to do rehearsals, um. Especially in smoky weather, or this could be a space that they could potentially go to, would be cheaper than breaking out the festival to them. So that is the concept. Um, and I did table, uh, had a table at the block party. At dozens and dozens of people come through, gave them this spiel. It was largely positive, although. People did express concerns, um, mainly about the condition of the building and whether it would be safe. I had one gentleman uh come up to me who taught there for thirty years and. And thought it was a sick building. And of course, one of the first things we would do i- if we move forward with this uh is do a fatal flaws analysis and make sure that. It can be renovated in a healthy way uh before we take a step. There is asbestos, that's known, but it is um under, it is. Yeah, it's encapsul- well, it's it's wrapped, it's asbestos wrapped wrapped pipe in a crawl space, a four foot by four foot crawl space. Under the building, so it's. But that would be removed. That would have to be removed. That would have to be abated. Um, and then. And then, yeah, the whole thing would be renovated and it would look brand new and don't know what the cost would be, because this is just an idea. So the next step would be, if the council is in favor, um. We could go out to R F Q and uh and get a design firm on board. Um, to take to to advance this to the next s- step. Um, I did do a a. Quick and dirty survey. We have a project page on our website. N C W Libraries asked us, where can we send people to get more information? So I. Literally the day of the block party, created a survey, created a project page. There wasn't a lot of thought or feed feedback that went to and went into it, but what the survey was four questions. And just said, were you aware that? City Hall needs more space moving forward, or you were, the library wants more space moving forward. What do you think about the idea of moving the library into a renovated Osborne? What do you think the idea of adding some community space for programming? And largely favorable. Um, a lot, it was either in favor, a few people said, no, it's a horrible idea. Um, and then any of a chump said, we need more information. So. More information, the only way we can get more information is to move forward with the feasibility.
And just to pull up to it, just to say, you know, our conversations with the library themselves, they're very positive. They they love the idea of, you know. Out of ways from the from the the issues that they encounter downtown and be or in that community. Plus, the 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 really advantage of having that art space right outside for. How much they flow in the outdoor and have programming. Play space, if you would. So that really fit well with them too. They were, they're, I would say they're excited about the potential of it. It's not just like, oh, well, you have to, you know, then it's more like, we're we're in a significant field of positive for them. Yeah. Someone that lives right next door to us, I love the concept. Lot of questions about. Seems like a remodel, it's often more expensive. But I love the concept, I mean. Yeah, I'd say it's funny, but not.
Yeah, we have to provide them with a with a shell that they can move into, but it's more than just a shell. Like when we show them the library initially, they said, well, we can't, we don't have the funds to renovate this. So we would have, and and there's heating, but no air conditioning, so they require air conditioning, so it would be the cost of putting in mini splits to make sure the places.
It was our agreement. It seems crazy that when they're starting to run the whole library, it seems crazy, but that's a.
It i- if it is, that's their, that is their model. Even though they get three point seven percent of your property tax a year.
Well, anyway, I love the concept. Yeah, and that space, that concept space over there.
There's some con- some, there were a few comments, like, this is a bait and switch. This isn't what you told us we were gonna get when you first did the visioning session. Or you have the, yeah, the visioning process was stow. Um, it's news to me that City Hall needs more space. But why does City Hall need more space? Why don't you just send people to work from home? Yeah, comments like that, like you.
But not the majority, that's.
It's not the majority.
So if we uh, you did that, then what? Your option for City Hall would be possible B?
No, no. That'd be, yeah. Yeah, what I would do is I'd do an R F Q and put together a base of a menu of items and we go through the first step, which would be. Is it absolutely a hundred percent feasible to repurpose this space? In a safe way. So, you know, make sure that it's that it doesn't have. Mold or mildew or whatever, you know, once, i- i- that couldn't be uh a bait. Um, I would also ask them uh for a price for uh doing the demolition. Renovate uh and doing renovations and the architecture to go with it. And then another add-on would be, how would we re-envision the library? Space for City Hall purposes, should this happen? And then put a cost of that as well.
Well, that would be our expanded space, it would be what there is, so it would. Again, it would be renovating current space. That that the city needs versus add-on space. Yeah, that would give us the space that. That our projected space would be.
Might not give us the 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 square footage number that A R C proposed with the with an addition here. But. We're making do right now. Um, and in fifteen, twenty years, if we outgrew the expanded space, I'm sure we could make do then. The, yeah, kick the can down the road. What this does is, we have. To do their option B for expanding City Hall and the library is a fourteen million dollar project. To build a new community center at the Osborne would be a ten to fifteen million dollar project. I have no idea what this would cost. That's what the the feasibility would do, but I'm saying. It'll be a lot less than those two things combined.
Right, it's a demo. Yeah, I know, and I get it, but I think it's important. Here's what's going on. Here's what I think, here's the concept. You'll hear this week, you can hear, I don't believe, I never heard about this. And make it survey based on.
No, no, the survey that I did for this one is literally four questions. It's about the shortest survey you could see. But also, I had multiple people tell me that it was a, it was a survey that was that was fishing for skewed information. So. Anytime you do a survey, you're gonna have people saying, oh, you're only doing that because you're trying to get to a particular answer.
Well, there's a lot of council people, which concerns me. You have three people that haven't, four people that haven't expressed anything to me yet.
I know Sharon's opinion.
I'm just adding any.
Be nice up some insight.
I think I've made myself clear over this whole process. What what was purchased for being space and park. Has now turned into saving the city from having fewer employees, blah, blah, blah.
I think uh, you know, that's saying good. Thank you for the questions. The only if I purpose, I still advise for you to say or. So capacity, but uh. The hard reality is that. There's no way we didn't, couldn't expand. I don't believe we have too many boys. I think we have. Meeting the needs of the community. That means they have big spaces to work, so. At extent, that's legitimate, that are options. I think this is an option. That deals with our goal in a very thoughtful way. I mean, I understand, but. Creating separate, giving such a good scratch. What they thought about. Relocating the library to more west entrance specific area. They were sharing concerns about. We see green space, I. You're saying as much green space as possible. Players, no events. It's not final, but it's plans. Need space in the playground there. That is some. Recreation space. Here is the space that we can. Over that option of maybe recreation there, which we didn't have on. Discuss it, it develop, you put lights up there and make it. No, it's debated, but even stand that, you do, the pickleball is the outside. Here's a lot of people. Difficult idea of that place. Many different draws, many different aspects of it. Dog, soccer, being played now. Go to the library, the pickleball. All, probably more than you, something is eat, they both be eat, like, both be generational.
Yeah.
People together. We gotta do something about one. We gotta, our thing is. It's a viability, it's light.
It can attract nuisance.
Yeah, I know that. It's an elephant. We gotta get, we gotta, we gotta make some steps for it all that.
So I don't know what it would cost to move forward with this idea. Um, I will find that out. I'm getting the sense that you guys would like to hear more information, which in my mind, I can't take this any further on my own. Um, I have to get a consultant on board to um to tease this out. Uh, we do have funding set aside for the Osborne demolition that we get to bend to, depending on the cost is.
Yeah, can we soul source?
I can't soul source. No, no, it's a public works project. They have to do R F Q.
Yeah, we should, would you?
I'm just, no, you guys can't vote during the study session. I'm just looking for direction.
Direction.
Yeah, I'd like to see us move forward. We have to do something of one. Right? This seems like the best and most viable option. All of these companies.
Good stuff, that for space needs. And an expansion space at us one.
Yeah.
If we do a fresh one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, and the parking that A R C put in there, that's based on our code. Um, I spoke to the superintendent when this idea first came to me in January of last or December of last year. And um, she was very. Bullied on the idea of of uh of having this the library there. Um, she thinks that it would be more utilized by kids after school. Um, and she thought that we could come up with an arrangement, share their parking lot for the live, for the library. Rather than having to build a new dedicated parking.
Well, at least.
At least, we did, yeah. Share the district button.
Yeah.
You could bump out the existing one by the administrative building mode and. Well, there's space, okay? Space itself, but that's called system.
Yeah, right.
The space from east.
Yeah, to the west of the administrative building.
Yeah.
We did ask about just utilizing the existing paved area, um. Where the covered basketball fields, basketball courts are. And Jeff was there with me in person and he said, no, I wouldn't recommend that at all. It wasn't properly built as a parking.
Yeah, the the parking was, it was more for people to walk on and not cars, so, but, but yeah, I think. The idea of floating the act of sharing it with the uses down south is great, because you could. If you did have one consolidated lot, at least you're. You're preserving as much green space as possible. So if that's an agreement you can come to with that. That owner of the bottom parcels, then.
Put a whole store there, I said, maybe.
Yeah.
Well, if we're looking for. Depreciation.
Marco, have you been inside the Osborne? Jim?
Yeah.
Do you know how many pickleball courts would fit there?
Um, I'm saying these. They're pretty small, so it's five or six.
Okay.
They're not, they're not too big.
Yeah, we, I think we drew it to scale in the, we have a pickleball player in our office that that kinda. Drew it up to scale, so I think the two is is safe, uh, the one from the render.
No, we're just talking about the gym.
The indoor gym, the outside has more, it's bigger, that space is a lot bigger.
Your rendering shows two, two courts there.
Yeah.
So it needs to stand one layer, you're selling. Don't figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, make it part of the test course, and like, put it out, you know.
It sounds like I've got some direction. Thank you.
Um, before we close it up.
Yeah.
Um. So we need uh. Overhead. Cover, that kind of safe foot.
No, I reviewed, uh, Jeff and I looked at it closely when we were at the site. If you remove half the building and left that cover, it would look ridiculous, first and foremost. It would just look, it would look awful. Especially from Sharon's view. Um, but. What he came up with was, hey, we could move this over to the Public Works Campus. We got a cover.
At least get something covered.
So rather, rather than, you know. Yeah, so I don't know what it would cost to to move that thing, but.
Yeah, to keep you out of the snow for a year.
Yeah. It's screwed into concrete, I think.
I didn't catch that, Jeff. What'd you say?
I was saying it, it it's a nice structure. I know that. Histor- uh, recent events that you've had trouble keeping public works vehicles out of the snow, so it was just a a thought if you. If one day that thing got detached and made its way down the street, you you could solve a a temporary problem for a low cost.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thanks that we.
Yeah, that was really a good um step forward. That's exciting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
A long time.
Yeah, a lot of too long, what's going on?
And the parks in the works, the committees work on that design.
Yeah, the playgrounds.
Playground.
Yeah, I knew the playground was under development.
I have some idea.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to phase it, we're gonna have to phase it.
Do we have next steps from Public Works?
A car wash acquisition?
Where are we on?
Second.
Um, I signed, I signed something earlier this week. If they, at that point, they said it would be two weeks. So hopefully I'll have something for you at your next meeting.
Right? Okay, um.
Have a question that's gone now.
Generally, our study setting is this. Well, generally, we. Fill it enough with just trying to get our own chat and then it's a good for us to be in versus. You know, because it's not, we're not deciding that, we're just trying to chew on things, so we try to do mostly chewing, but we do. Again, get public tests and things and to make an exception if we're not. But it's kind of like a. Case by case.
I would like to, you guys, I didn't realize the marketing ones are verbal. I don't know how many she talked to them. But that's why I ran it. Jason Sunshine, so I can.
We asked him in the chat.
We had issues with an earlier Zoom meeting today and it wasn't. And we're using the owl. Um, not these things.
So you said, like, you know, maybe.
Yeah, thank you for that. Because you want people to hear. Yeah, we definitely tried to um pick it up from. Previous attempts.
Will, can you hear us?
Yeah, the sound is really kind of spotty and I even think this morning's uh. The downtown steering committee, it wasn't like the owl sound was turned on. It was like it was capturing the sound from the podiums. So it sounds, it's difficult to hear, sounds pretty garbled. Uh, unless like Marco was sitting close to the speaker. So that was more clear. Uh, Selby, you're fairly clear. I think sitting closer to your speakers helps.
Wonder if the laptops are blocking a little too.
How many, how many speakers are there? There's.
There's two down there.
Two, two down there. This here.
Yeah, we have just one on this side.
Yeah, well, we'll have to make sure we.
But we did just turn it up, so hopefully that helps.
Does that turn them all up?
It does. If any one of us touches one, they all go together.
Well, that's what that control is, you just tap that.
You can turn the volume up, turn it down.
Okay.
Be careful, the center one does mute it.
So, Will, can you hear me?
It does sound more clearly now, so.
Okay.
Uh, Clint, do you want to test it? Because you have a soft voice.
That's funny.
You did tonight anyway, because I think you were sitting back, so I remember thinking.
Talking to my normal voice right now. Can you hear me all right?
It is more clear, yeah. So the, the sound level did help.
Well, it's supposed to be able to pick it up, but. But it might have just needed to be turned up.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, Polly.
All right. Moving on, we got a resolution. It's not marked, because we're not going to be asking. But just looking at our legislative priority. Again, for twenty twenty four. And again, building up of keeping something sane, the, the housing remains a strong priority, um, hopefully for all of us. And the fire issues that. And those are similar. I. I did dump. And then we, we're adding a capital request that help us complete the road. Um, and that was actually. Um, this is the road. For the new uh. Uh, wider apartments to. Punch it through all the way to Titus always jumps it. And that was actually brought. Uh, encouraged that we add that by representative danger, felt like we remembered when it turned. The fight years ago and just said. You know, why don't you get? Put in for a capital request, so we, we added that to our legislative priorities to, to do that one. And then I did just pass out, um, the Association of Washington Cities has their. They go from three to five. Kind of major themes, if you would, that they bring uh on an annual basis. So I just passed those out. We usually just add those to our own. Individual city one. And then just again, yeah, that's that one that I can. Had added, um, those come from the Association of Washington Cities. And then um. Yeah, and then just get feedback and questions and. Your ideas. Um, we'll look forward. Based on those and, and, and again, if, if something. You know, in response to this, if something else. Bubbles to the surface, just let us know and. But um, we want to get those out and then again, we'll distribute them to, and. Something and I both had met with uh. Senator Hawkins today and had a great discussion of him on our housing issues and stuff, so. Um, along with Blake Baldwin. Which working with us. On the. Legislative side with our, our lobbyists, um, if you would. And so it was a very, I think, helpful meeting and productive thing. Um, yeah, we'll just keep. Moving those things forward.
Is that the meeting move usually in thousand two?
No, this was just a, a. That was, you're usually. They do um.
Is listening to it?
What, yeah, it is, it is listening. Set up actually by. Um, Blake Baldwin. Then we're on some housing ideas, so we'll hear from him and. Again, um. They're very, uh, and then I did go to also do the open house for the. The rededication, I guess, it'd be of the garden house this afternoon down. That was, where they added some evenings and. And uh. Again, um. Both Senator Hawkins and also Representative Steele were down there and, and. Yeah, it's just great because they get to see. Uh, the impact uh on a community when you can house the people that, you know, need the housing and, you know, are. Part of the vulnerable population and. Um, and get to see that uh in importance of that, if you're going to be a whole. Uh, new side of that, so it would be great. Uh, opportunity there too. Anyway, just. Any? Suggestions, comments, thoughts on legislative priority?
I had a question on a sentence. In number two, the, on the first page, it starts out this. The last sentence in the paragraph, the city understands that educating property. Owners and community groups on loss mitigation, mitigation strategies in wildland urban interface, it's almost like there's something missing to that sentence. Maybe it needs to end with is an important. Initiative or factor.
And yeah, where is it? That might be on the page.
So yours, your document.
Yeah.
Number two, fire prevention, it starts on the first page.
On the first.
And it's that last sentence. The city understands the educated. There's something missing, yeah. But I don't know.
The words seem right, it's just missing some punch away.
Okay.
Because they're saying the city understands that the property owners, community groups. On loss mitigation strategies.
So just the, okay, I was sure it was missing something else at the end, maybe.
Yeah, it's.
Almost like it needs, is a.
Is imperative, is important, no, right, there's, there's action.
Yeah.
Beyond understanding.
So also, the identity of San Diego. Has city ordinance in place that people are mitigated by laws and problems. If you're not, don't prioritize property.
I mean, we can do that, that was.
That's what I'm saying. Okay, yeah, but if we actually, you know, there are a lot of places. But not burden the people or somehow create a fund to help them do that in that, you know, further back what we were talking about earlier. Is to increase our fire retro fails, say, hey, we're not just going to send a ruler away and put her in them. It's important you do this, because you have a common state, not just you, it's your neighbors, it's the entire city. But I mean, I just got a call from the guy who puts in sprinklers. Downtown areas, so we spent. So, yeah, that kind of, I would like for CS. Push to a lot.
Yeah, I'll hold on, Marco, you're talking about it. There, this is good legislatively, I mean, if the state probably gets by and how it is, but it also. In our mindset can't be that this is an outside of city limit problem that we. We've been thinking about fire thinning, yeah, and this is talking about preventing, but even if we did all of stuff. We're still likely under threat of wildfire in the city limits, so thinning is great. Forest health is great. Turning slash into. Carbon that can be used, all that's great stuff, but it's really, realistically, it's not going to prevent. Not when you're doing that, not, not with the near term or law, and those are two different things, so it's not that we top of mind for people that. We can't look at the, the problem that the surrounding forest landowners, like Forest Service have been assaulted. They're not. They're building, you should get it, and mitigating the act.
I did make free phone assessment.
Oh, did you?
Any other comments on the legislated? Otherwise.
You wanted to put a title on number three, because you have titles on all of them, but three.
Okay.
Maybe infrastructure investment like A W E C has.
Sure. Um, any other? Thoughts or ideas, the things you want to be brought forward before we take a break?
I know it's out of the city and it would be great because you're walking.
The um. There's potential that, you know, for. They're, they're trying to, you know, do a pathways plan that would connect all the cities all the way down the valley, and if they do, if we pursue that. I mean, we're talking about using some of our watching dollars to put that study together so they can go after grants. But our stipulation is that it would come all the way into town from. You know, all the way, it, it probably will go out North Road and out that way, get it, become and bring them all the way into town. Well, it's actually, it's, we're gonna work with Trent, um, but it's through, um, the. Chalene Douglas, uh, transportation.
Hawkins backing it.
While they're, right now, what they're doing, we're, we're just. We're using actually some of the, the non. Um, road transportation dollars that have come through the infrastructure bill and stuff, so we're taking some of those and. Communities are asking to put forward. Uh, hotel motel tech dollars or some dollars anyway to help complete and get it up, that we put. Enough detail together that we go out, start going after grants, because now, I mean, again, this is kind of prime time for those kind of off. Off-road uh kinds of transportation. Um, and we don't want to lose that window, uh, so we're trying to move forward with that, so. Oh, yeah, it's, you know, it'd be a great.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, in the pipeline.
Yeah, it's been a while and, yeah.
There, you were still here from uh Matt Lyons and Trent. He reached out to me a few weeks ago and wanted to come and talk to us, but.
No, I've been in a meeting.
DVD.
First off. I've been checking, uh, you know, it on, what the status on the Audi committee?
Oh, yeah.
Or like, where are we having that?
Yep, yep, we're waiting to have that um advertised for the. People to submit applications and go through a review process of setting up the committee.
So we haven't had. You know, the average hasn't been advertised yet?
It has not.
Has not.
Has not.
So we gotta, we gotta keep that up, push that up so that it gets started. And I. Um, I'm just gonna throw this out, when I was at the uh. Discussion pool at festival. That one Tuesday. I noticed that. Even then, this started somewhat contentiously. Uh, questions of such. That as the, the night wore on, uh. Things started to be clarified. Misconceptions got clarified, questions got answered. And I feel like I would like to. Close somehow. That we, uh, as a council, present those kind of issues, whether it's pool. Whether it's Osborne, whether it's. Issues on. Affordable housing, that we actually open that up to public discussion. It's, it's a risk, but I think it's a good risk because it. And I think we really are about transparency in this council. I think it would allow us to. Explain things, we might not get people to agree with us for what we're trying to do, but at least. They would have a chance to ask those questions because the neighborhood gathering isn't really a question and answer thing, it's a information spreading thing. And I would like, kind of like what they. You know. Pull back in the past, they had that life one thing where they. We came together and trash things out. And I think, I think it's well worth our time. With these issues in front of us, that we. Have those festival meetings. View those questions, clarify them, I think it'd be a good answer to that. The questions that are out there in the community and the misconceptions that get spread on social media, I think. That might about would be why we're in that pool discussion. That. We can counter that pretty well, so. That's kind of my rough idea.
Yeah, just take, uh, let those just be the single issue things and, and just kind of, again. Let, let the discussion be around that one thing.
One thing, yeah, just that one thing.
There's probably seventy-five people total.
Yeah, I know, that's still a drop in the bucket. What about some kind of fact sheet, like where, where, why, or something interactive? Where you jump in and you're part of it. We struggle with communication still, it doesn't help that, um, Chris has done, right, but. I mean, that, that's really a pretty easy preventable thing to summarize these projects, what they are and what they are not.
Yeah.
And where they are in the process and what we're asking for, but are not asking for. Yeah, exactly, what, what is. Yeah, are we close on filling that? And we're, we're.
We're beginning close.
Two, two points, uh, the communications and special projects manager interviews, we've got four. Two, two points, uh, the communications and special projects manager interviews, we've got four finalists. Doing the interviews on Monday, Friday and Monday, so I have a decision early next week, I hope to have someone. Uh, you know, onboard as soon as they can get here. Um, we do have, and I know that it's not well known, but we do have a projects page on our website, a project tracker. Um, and the pool page is updated, so I updated it on Friday. Um, so it has the survey results, it has the presentation.
Oh.
I don't believe it has a link to the video, the, I did live, I did livestream that. Forum on Tuesday on Facebook Live. Um, the audio wasn't fantastic, but if you turn it all the way up, you can hear, uh, so, you know, it's just something I tried.
Yeah.
And then, um, Andrea took the time to put that up on our. Now famous YouTube page, it's not quite famous, but it will.
Fourteen views.
At Bavarian Town. Um, now, we can always improve with communication, but we will have someone onboard within the next month. Who will be dedicated to that.
Well, maybe that's a good time to rethink how we get information out, the website is a good place, but some people. People are more suited, I think, like, and Facebook, whether you hate it or love it.
But I will say, beyond putting stuff on our website and beyond putting stuff on our own so, our own social channels, there's not much more we can do. Um, we find that mailers are ineffective, um, than expensive, and I'm kind of. Backtracking on how many of those we do because they are really expensive, and I know the people just look at them, they think it's junk and they throw it away.
Something could interacted online, because one thing I found is that when we compete with communications vacuum, people take advantage of it. So they're down there, trying to spin, and we saw them.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah. Can you use Go on anymore? Oh, I know. Twenty-four seven jazz or something, yeah.
I said you could get the communication position.
Yeah.
Well, again, yes, uh, when Christie was on board with us for a couple of years, I think that. We increased our level of service as far as mediation goes, and I. Got to see that level of service and that anticipated since Christie left, and I think that that lends towards people thinking we're being less transparent. Really, you just don't have someone in that position to keep that level of service up, and so I'm I'm looking forward to having that back.
Yeah, I, my intention is not to have that person at this table on Tuesday night, so. So they will be on staff, they'll be part of the the senior management team, but I don't, I don't think they need to be here on the dais every Tuesday.
All right, all right, good ideas, good ideas, let's take a break, a real break. And then we'll gather again.
They're back. Watch, check. I did some videos.
All right. Call the meeting of the Edward City Council for September twenty-sixth, in order, and stand for the fight. Do you want to start it?
Sure. Ready to get. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a teacher, teacher, oh, it's a teacher.
Nice to be in your classroom.
Very glad to have you.
Roll call.
Jerry Modern.
Clint Strahan.
Jason London.
Anne Hester.
Steve Deister. Marco Aureli.
And note that Tabor Locke is, uh, not here, but he's excused, but it's known that, uh. Situation arrived. Be addressed, so. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. A question?
I have. Just a couple. Quick. Let me move over to the table.
Yeah.
Okay, on. Okay, page one, under house table. Oh, work day, oh, no. Number two. AR two parking lot. As it's on the, um. So they spent money, we spent money on the car wash and Osborne, and I just wanted to look with that, it says equipment rental. What about rental? So in our ER and our fund, we have the contract for the space needs assessment that they have been doing. In regards to the car wash, that public works facility, what we just talked about tonight.
Okay.
And then they did do a small portion of the Osborne, and we use the demolition funding for that. To do Selby's presentation this evening.
You use demolition money for that?
We are using that line item in the budget because that's the only line item we have for Osborne. And it's looking at the actual, it's utilizing funds. To figure out, could we demo it? So it is related to demolition.
Okay, on page. Two. Oh, at the very top, right, each software incorporated asset essentials on demand services.
That's training for our asset asset management program, we're implementing asset essentials.
What's an asset management program?
So that's where we're starting to track all of our work orders and work requests and our garbage, so we do garbage, there's extra pickup and lit up. You got that, so it's all tracked and communicated to Billy.
Thank you. That's question. We're going to page six. Um, under, I put one down, under threat, equipment, meter upgrades.
So those are purchases for new meters that we use down at the public workshop. We use them to either replace broken meters or we use them when we are assisting with installation of. New meters at a site, which is paid for back to us by the developer.
Okay. And then on the next page down, page seven. Um. The second one down, Dobbs Peterbilt in Tacoma for number two, twenty-eleven Peterbilt garbage.
Okay, Dobbs Peterbilt is a company who does repairs, maintenance and parts. And so we purchased probably parts for that two, two hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents, that's probably just parts for the twenty-eleven garbage truck.
Okay. I think they want to be more quick. On page. Nine, down to the bottom, three thousand dollars for load start, strategic health fee for consulting services. August twenty, twenty-three for lobbying.
Right, so just a couple meetings ago, council approved the contract to hire load star. Strategic.
Okay.
To do our lobbying at the legislature.
Yeah, this has to be three thousand thirty years, so.
Uh, they'll probably, I think it was supposed to be a.
About two seat of thirty.
A monthly billing though?
Yeah, right.
And and they'll be. Correct, and they'll be doing work all throughout.
So we pay it even if it hasn't done any work yet?
They've, they have.
They've been doing, yeah.
Um, could we get a report on that at some time? Because I'm interested in what.
Yeah, I'm gonna reach out to Blake and ask him for multiple reports.
Sure, get a, just a monthly writ. I think that's where.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, my last question, and this is on page eleven. And, um. Does that call security, and I wondered, I feel a lot of, looks like that's all, I think that's obviously fine, where they got a refund.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, is there, I'm on the festival committee, but I haven't seen a report here in forty-four months. Is there some way the managers can send the festival committee report, but nobody else?
Yes, the festival com- festival committee has been having a hard time meeting because of forum issues, people not being available.
Yeah.
Um.
But that doesn't mean we.
Understood. Yep, no, we can, we can take care of that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do want to note that the festival security, uh, that is something that's being paid for by the renter. We, we paid the security company to be on site to be security during their event, but we also charged them for it.
I wondered if there was a reason why there were so many refunds.
Well, every time an event is over, they get their deposit back.
That's what they get.
Everyone, everyone has to pay a deposit upfront, so if there are damages or if there are extra services provided, we first take it out of their deposit. And it's a very rare case that someone actually uses more than their deposit, in other words, they still owe us more at the end of their event. So it's good to have that. Big deposit.
Yes.
Because we do retain what we need to, and then we only refund whatever's left.
Okay, I can factor that to deposit refunds, yeah.
Yeah, most of the ones that you see on refund are typically coming directly out of that deposit line item, so, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So. Jason seconded. David, let me see any. Pass the unanimous thing. A public safety report, and instead of Randy Lake, we have Monica Heems with us tonight, so Monica.
Hello.
Hi.
Um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, August was actually a pretty busy month, uh, for calls for service, we had a hundred and seventy-two calls. Uh, generated, um, we had eight hundred and ninety city contract hours and thirty-six foot patrol hours. Um, I know I personally was, uh, spent, uh, quite a bit of time in Leavenworth in August and did speed enforcement on ski hill. Uh, the lower section, and I did the four-way stop enforcement, um, quite a bit. So I, you know, I did write a decent amount of warnings at the four-way stop still, um. There's not. A ton of egregiousness there, they're just not coming to a complete stop, so, uh, the speeding on ski hill, I was surprised, there's not, um. There wasn't a lot, um, so most people were doing, you know, seven to. To almost ten over, and if they they got to that ten over range, I would pull them over, so. Um, other than that, the calls for service were pretty generic, uh, but but we were busy, um. I know, uh. The mayor, you wanted me to touch on Autumn Leaf potentially, uh, I I was working that weekend and we were able to get the three overtime positions staffed. And incident wise, we didn't really have any incidents related to the festival, the issue that arose was the new roundabout on the west end. And there were some issues with redirecting traffic there that's going to have to be addressed again, or, you know, addressed, uh, because it was new. Um. And, uh. What do we have, we have, uh. Oktoberfest coming up, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
So I'm working, I'm working both Friday and Saturday this weekend, uh, overtime details, uh, we are, I believe, we're fully staffed. And so, uh, we are all ready to do some foot patrol for the city of Leavenworth, and I think it's a good group of. Of CCSO deputies that are going to be at your guys' disposal, so that's my report.
What were some of the, um, the problems on the roundabout or issues?
The issue was, they were having to. Literally check every single car that that showed up because, because of the access being granted to go to downtown. So every single car, and then they'd have to reroute them back around, and it backed all the way up Tumwater Canyon, um, icicle was backed up, it it, uh. It was a, it was a traffic issue. Um, and I think what needs to be addressed is if access is going to be granted at all. At that end into town, or if we make everybody kind of go around and come in, uh, from from the east end. If they're going to actually go to downtown, that that's the crux of the issue.
How's that being discussed, will be allocated that parking?
You.
Fill up pretty quick.
The parking filled up quick, is that what you said?
Yeah, no, like, what I'm saying is, if you were gonna deny access to the city because you're trying to be highway two goal, that's.
Um, I I think that you, that, oh, there's a, there's the route that they allow to come into town, um, on the east end, if you wanted to access it. It's, um, you know. It would have to be discussed by Autumn Leaf Festival, obviously, I just know that the deputy that was on that west end said, if this is like this next year, I won't be signing up.
When we discussed this the morning before. My understanding was that Public Works is gonna have a barricade at Mill and Mine. So anybody coming through on the roundabout would be stopped there so they wouldn't impact parade.
Right.
Maybe that information didn't make its way to the sheriff's deputy that was at the roundabout.
Well, I mean, tent there was supposed to be kind of soft closure at US two icicle, so folk could get through. Right, majority would see the T tour and go down icicle, he wouldn't have to check everyone because that's not communicated, that takes a lot of time, so. We'll get that clarified next year.
That sounds like a great plan.
Monica, are you able to speak to the incident today at the Coles Corner or not?
Um, I only have what was, I believe, put out by the, just the, uh, public. Um, are you talking about the SWAT call?
Yes.
Okay, um, I know that the the chief put out. Um, a, uh, crimity sakes, a public notice. And it's basically, yeah, press release, um, just stating that, uh, my understanding, it was a domestic dispute. And, um, the subject was taken into custody with, uh, no. Um, no harm to anybody involved.
Other questions? All right, thank you, Monica.
Absolutely.
Very much. We have.
Mike? No, we don't, not tonight.
Okay. If you not have a. Other district report, so we'll go on to comments from the public on items not on the agenda. But you wish to speak. On an item. That's not on the agenda. Uh, not anybody rush for hands go up. So I'll assume that we can move from there. To our workshops on multifamily tax exemption program, will it?
Thank you, mayor, um, council members, members of the public that are here on this topic. Uh, we also have our consultant from Burke, Andrew Bourne, he is here to help address any questions. I'm going to give a quick overview of what the multifamily tax exemption program is, and then. The goal for tonight was to provide an opportunity for public comment and hopefully get some questions answered. That also means that the city council can ask questions as well. Uh, this workshop will be followed. With a public hearing that is planned and has been scheduled for October tenth. Um. Sorry, my PC is yelling at me. Um, I'll need to plug in here just briefly. But in any case, uh, the public hearing would adopt these regulations, so tonight's public workshop is a very important part of the process. We will also be taking comment at the public hearing as well. So what is a multifamily tax, housing tax exemption? It is a program authorized by the state initially to help redevelop underutilized downtown. Or community cores and centers with housing. Um, the program was developed quite some time ago by the state, like I said, for larger jurisdictions. To help them, uh, revitalize their communities. Uh, it has been popular and successful in other communities, and so with the housing issues the state as a whole has been facing. The legislator opted to make this program available for all communities regardless of size. Um, we are focusing the draft of this program to be with the downtown commercial zoning, but also the multifamily zoning. So a developer who comes in and wants to add housing in those zoning districts. And wants to provide it at for lower. And wants to provide it at for lower income, and that includes a hundred and fifteen percent of the AMI. Uh, the. Program. Also allows for housing at lower incomes as well. It. The way we have drafted it after several meetings with the city council and the. Previous Housing Committee is that it's focused on. Uh, an exemption for rental units and an exemption for ownership units. The ownership units would. Retain their low income status for a minimum of twenty years. We do require them to partner with an agency such as MEND and. Those timeframes for requiring and maintaining affordability are greatly extended when you partner with those groups. MEND, I think, is a minimum of ninety-nine years. But the rental units, they have, uh, as it's drafted, a twelve-year program. And during those timeframes. The developer does not have to pay, uh. Taxes. For the improvements of the low-income units. If it's part of a mixed unit development. Market rate and low income, only the low-income units are exempted from taxes from the developer. Now exemption of taxes is a tricky concept. Uh, taxes still need to be paid, things need to happen. So in reality, this program is a more of a tax shift. So whatever the developer doesn't play, pay gets spread out. Among all the other residents in the city. So in the packet under tab eight, you have a handout on what is a multifamily tax exemption. You have the draft code language. That's followed by the map that delineates that this program would apply in the commercial and multifamily zones. And then the last handout. Which is the last, uh, oh, excuse me, there's two more. The second to last handout is from. Department of Commerce, and it talks about what a tax shift is. That is followed by, um, Andrew's. Our consultant's summary with a lot of caveats because. Planning out how taxes get shifted is tricky business. But there's a rough estimate of a project, an eight million dollar project, and how that would equate to a residential. Tax ship and. It equated if your property value is about four hundred thousand. It's just under ten dollars a year shifted to that property owner. So. In any case, that's what's in the packet. That's a general concept of the program. Once they finish their timeframe, whether that be twelve years or twenty years. Then everything returns to normal. The property owners pay the full tax. There's no more shift. Um, and in the meantime, the city has benefited from providing houses, housing for lower income residents. And like I say, some of these programs have the opportunity to. Extend the life of that low-income housing. Depending on how they're set up. So with that broad. Introduction, I'll just turn it over for public comment, and I'll be listening, but I'm gonna grab my, uh. Power cord, so.
All right. Questions? Who's listening? You got a question, she's let's let's.
Yeah, Lilith, thank you so much for laying it out this way. I do like the graphics and the way it's, uh. You've really, I don't think you have that eight, twelve, twenty years. I guess my overarching question is. Just quickly, how how many places have seen this result in affordable housing? More diversity in neighborhoods and communities. And I'm not being facetious, I'm just curious because this. Obviously came to be and it's been, how long has it been going on for and? Where, what places and where has it been going on for that have seen improvements in what we are trying to accomplish? For places. And so I've got it. And if Andrew hasn't answered, that'd be my field.
Um, I I I'm gonna, I I'm gonna ask Lilith to stall a little bit because you have a graph that can help.
Lots of jurors. Things have been used.
You're breaking up, Lilith. She's.
Don't see her anymore.
Oh, there she is.
I do see on the first handout, out of twenty twenty-two fifty-five communities in Washington. Have active MFT programs and nineteen communities issued final certificates in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, yeah.
So all that blue kind of talks about. It doesn't tell you who. I know there is one, I believe, in Wenatchee.
Yeah.
Quite a bit of them have happened on the west side in the bigger. City areas.
Yeah, and I guess that's that answers part of my question, but the other part of my questions are so. And has it actually resulted? How's, I'm not, again, I I'm looking at this all, I could see how it is expected and helpful, but does the data occur?
Um, I I think that the answer is both yes and it's complicated. Um, I I've, I can provide a graphic to you, um. Uh, to support, um, to to give you a more clear answer, but. Um, there are communities that have seen a lot of uptake in MFT programs and and really when you're looking at the state. Um, Seattle's responsible for about half of the total MFT units in the state, but taking them out of consideration. Um, you've seen a lot of success with it in communities like, uh, Vancouver, Washington and Redmond and Kirkland and, uh. Shoreline on the, on the, uh, on the west side. Um, Spokane has had some, uh, successes with it as well, uh, over to the east. And as you said, Wenatchee has had some uptake of their program. We're. We're actually, uh, working with them a bit right now, uh, with respect to housing incentives, so. Um, in a couple of months, I could give you a clearer answer about, um. Uh, how it relates to their, uh, current market situation, but. It has received uptake in smaller communities as well, and, uh, there are smaller communities. Um. That have seen projects. But one other note is that the. Ability for communities the size of Leavenworth to use MFT is a relatively new thing. It was only allowed in. Um, twenty twenty-one, so because of the. Uh, time necessary to spool up real estate projects. Uh, it hasn't necessarily, um, we haven't necessarily seen a lot of uptake in smaller communities yet, but. Uh, they are coming. So.
Seeing by success, you're saying you're seeing a large influx or the engaged influx of people who are eighty percent of them. Coming in and living in. Communities there, uh, you know, like well above a hundred percent. So that's kind of, I also also might give you questions.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, you're asking if people are moving in to take advantage of this housing. I think. The reality is these are people who live in the community who need the housing.
Okay, it's actually good.
So yes, um. Lilith, I would ask. The, uh. When they're building, the developer builds this. And rents it, is who who manages, say it's the twelve-year twenty percent units. Uh, program. Um, who determines? The level of AMI that is. To, uh, apply for that is it. Is a city, uh, because I know the city plays a, the city council plays a big role in this, proving this. So we get to determine. If it's eighty percent or it's ninety percent of AMI or we let it go to a hundred fifteen, who makes that choice?
Well, the. Yes, the developer is gonna make that choice when they opt into using this program. If we have our inclusionary zoning, which we'll be talking about later. If it has certain limitations and focuses, then that might help direct how the the developer may or may not use this program. But having said that, the way we're looking at it right now, if adopted. The developer would do the analysis based on the cost of their units and the number of their units. And determine which AMI they they can or want to serve. And that would also outline maybe what program they're in. Right? If they're more rental unit, that's based on the developer. If they're more owner. Occupied units, that those are developer choices, both, both of those.
So, so they could, so that means they could choose. Everybody at a hundred fifteen percent because. That is a higher income level. Maybe they would, they would most likely choose someone who's closer to. Pay more for, you know, eliminate, if they have a choice, they're not going to choose eighty percenters. They're gonna choose, I'm just kind of. Setting that up. They can choose a hundred fifteen percent, most likely. In fact, they would.
Well, I.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure that's the case because, uh, every year they will have to submit a reevaluation. So people in the rental program in particular will have to. Document that they are still within that income level. Um, but Andrew, do you you have more experience with, uh, evaluating these after they're in place? What have you seen?
Um, uh, just to try to get to what I think your question is, um. So the state requirements, the way that they're set up. Um, they specifically state that, um. MFT can go to, uh, low and moderate income households. So that is. Uh, low income is considered to be, uh, eighty percent of area median income as the threshold. Um, moderate income is one hundred fifteen percent. Uh, the way that it's been interpreted. At minimum. Uh, you need to have a threshold of one hundred fifteen percent. But one unit at minimum needs to be rented to, uh, low-income household at eighty percent. That being said. Um, the statute explicitly states that the city can provide stricter. Um. Limits. So if all of the units were. Uh, rented it, i- if there was a requirement to rent all of the units to households making eighty percent AMI or below. That's something that can be included in the, um, in the ordinance.
Oh, so we have, as city council, we have control of that.
Yes.
Right. I just bring it up. I had a real good question from, uh. Uh, one resident is that. The AMI for Shaillane County actually is higher than the benefits for a family core is. Eight thousand five hundred a year. They've got that right. So this. Yeah.
Uh, what was that number again? I'm sorry.
Eighty thousand. I pulled it from HUD, Andrew.
Yeah.
This was in Fanning, May. So I, my question was earlier today, but. If this was accurate or how, it was what caliber we're going by. That's kind of what I want to get clear. Have I had a different calibration, Andy?
Um. So the the main number to look at is the, um, eighty thou, I I can share my screen, um, and it can. Uh, highlight some of the calculations here. Is that right? Can I do that?
Please.
Okay. Um, so if we're looking at. Um. And please excuse, I hope that this is.
That works.
Great. Um, so when we're looking at, um. Uh. Uh, when we're looking at AMI. It's. Based on projections that the US Department of Housing and Urban Development make on. Uh, previous years income, like median income for the county. Um, there are other numbers on the page that, uh, I believe. That, uh, I I don't know whether you set that out, Lilith, or whether that was something that had gone around. There there are other numbers for, uh, eighty percent AMI and fifty percent AMI that are on the HUD website. That you shouldn't use. It's, those are intended for different programs and not for MFT. There are a lot of different calculations you make, but the assumption is that. That median family income is for a family of four at one hundred percent AMI. So if you, if it's a smaller household, then you adjust it down. And you also adjust it down if it's, you know, eighty percent or sixty percent AMI. Uh, and then from that, you, what the the assumption is that. Um, on average, people, um, should be generally paying about thirty percent of their income towards. Housing costs. So you. Need to take some, um. Uh, some of that out for utilities and water, sewer, garbage, that kind of thing. But, um, overall. You know, it it starts with that eighty thousand number, and then it's adjusted on the basis of size and on the basis of, um, AMI level. So.
We have a couple of hands raised. You want to start with Travis?
Hey, everybody, um. This is, this is really, uh, great, uh, slides that you put together, Lilith. Um. I'd love to, I understand, and I guess the the last slide that was just shown is a better understanding. I'm trying to figure out how it translates to the renter. As far as the savings and then also the land developer, right? I mean, the cost of construction have gone up. They've they've settled down a little bit, but they're still pretty high for new construction or remodels. I'm trying to figure out what the advantage is to a developer, but also. What's, is there a good example of? Someone who's at eighty percent AMI. Um, what the rent would be and maybe, you know, if you, yeah. Is there something I could see on that? Is it real? Is it a real savings? I guess is what I'm asking, or is it like, ah, it's a hundred bucks a year? I I'm trying to figure out what that is.
It's great.
Now, the previous slide had the that total housing cost for the housing size or the family size.
It had a lot of numbers on it. I know, I'm just, is there one that we can highlight that just is a clear, they're gonna save four hundred dollars a month that? You know, and that and that compares to what? It compares to, you know, Leavenworth. You know, multifamily home here. How does that compare? To the current state of the market in Leavenworth? And does this include all the greater Leavenworth area, or is this just focusing on Leavenworth proper? Just.
The code is just for the city of.
Just the city, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and so it's, you're comparing it to market rate, so market rate can fluctuate a bit more. Uh, so you're gonna save there automatically. Um, Andrew, do you have an example of that in your notes?
Um, something that I can show that may get us part of the way there. I'll I'll share my screen again, and there are a lot of numbers again, I apologize. Um, one of the things that we can take a look at is for the Wenatchee. Uh, metropolitan statistical area. Um, the state puts out. Um. Wage rates, like average wage rates. So getting an understanding based on occupation. What people generally make and what percent AMI they're at, and then what? What would be affordable rent for them? And this is sorted by lowest wage to it low to high. Um, but if we're, if we're just thinking about a person who is household of one. And what would be affordable for them? Um, what we're looking at is like, if you're, uh, I'll I'll pick a. Uh. You know, if you're working retail, for example. And you're making, according to the statistics here, an average of thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. You're looking at being at about forty-six percent of AMI. Now. Um. It's complicated because. There are all sorts of different conditions you can think about. You can think about. You know, a single-parent household where you have one person trying to support a, a family of three or four. You know, you have like couples that try to cram into a studio apartment, all of that, but. Um. If you're looking at this, uh, and you're thinking about what some apartments are costing in the city. That you've seen. I mean, if you're looking at numbers like, you know, that somebody can afford about eight hundred dollars a month if they're working as a janitor. You know, odds are that they're. You know, doubling up or they're, you know, living outside of the city, or they're trying to find some other kind of solution, and that's really where. I think, I think that that might get us part of the way there in answering your question. I don't know if I could get to how much money they would save. I think, I think that that might get us part of the way there in answering your question. I don't know if I could get to how much money they would save.
Yeah, yeah, and that gets us up trying to get is, is it? You know, for a. The rent would be, you know, for somebody making thirty eight thousand dollars a year. Would be typically would be eight hundred dollars, nine hundred dollars a month. And then is that realistic for a developer to say, yeah, I can put something out there in downtown Leavenworth. And I can get a return on my money, but also help the community at eight hundred dollars a month. I'm not sure if that, that animal exists. And that's what I'm trying to figure out, realistically, uh, mar- marrying those two together.
Well, for. For that level of affordability, it's very challenging. Um, often. Depending on where you're at. Uh, M F T programs look to target somewhere between sixty and eighty percent. Seattle gets a little bit lower for like broom closets of two hundred, three hundred square feet. Um, but you, you typically find that it's in that range because essentially. The exempted taxes need to outweigh. The, essentially the savings that they're giving to the uh renters. So.
Right.
Need to balance that out, and it's, uh, uh, one, one small correction to, to what Lilith said. The exemption is for the entire building, and that's an advantage because if you're looking at. Uh, you know, providing support for twenty percent of the units in the building, you're getting five times of the, five times the impact. So you're able to get it to get the exemption to go further. So.
Okay, yep.
That's, that's a great clarification, Andrew, because we've had that discussion several times and. It ha- it hadn't been presented to us that way.
Yeah, it's, i- it's different than other incentive programs because like, uh, if you're providing exemptions for impact fees under the statute. It's only the affordable units that can get them, so it's, it, it's an easy thing to, to. All of this is complex. The state made it way too complex. I don't know why, but.
One last comment, i- and it's, it's, look, growing up in Iowa, one e- econ class. You know, thirty percent of um your income going towards housing. Yeah, that, that was fine in nineteen, you know, ninety-two. It's, it's creeped up, and I know it's over, it's a rolling average and those statistics come out, but. You, every, you know, the past five years. Around the country, it's, it's creeped up well above thirty percent, but just, just a note.
No, and, and that's, that's a fair point to make. It's very dependent on your income level. Lower income folks tend to spend more on housing than higher income folks. It's typically used with other housing policy, which is why it's used here. And the other note is that, you know, eighty percent is the high end. You can get people that are seventy or sixty percent. That are also trying to get into these types of rentals that may be paying more than uh thirty percent of their income. So.
No, great. I, I appreciate all of this, and it's just one more tool that, that the city's got. It's great. Thanks.
Linda C.
Uh, thanks. So I wanted to kind of piggyback on uh what Zeke was asking. That was a question in my mind. Who determine the mix of low income to the moderate income dwellings? And I, I would think that if. We are able to dictate any of that, um, maybe the city should consider. What's in the, and I can't remember where it is in the HAP or the comprehensive plan that has a breakdown of um. The different A M I levels and the, the needed homes per that level. And maybe um. Put something into the. Into the code that. Uses that mix that. Since we obviously need more low income, I would think that moderate income on a percentage basis, but maybe think about. Matching it up with the HAP. I think it's in the HAP. The other question I had was, um, so when you talk about these twenty percent and twenty-five percent. For the homeownership and twenty for the rentals and then twelve and twenty years. Um, so let's take the Weedner development, so. Currently, they've got three hundred units, so our, is what we're saying is that sixty units. Would have to be affordable in their development. For rentals or. Even more for. Uh, home, homeownership units. Is that, am I reading that right or? Calculating that right?
You are calculating that correctly, and it, it's an optional program for them to participate in. If they participate in it, then they would have to provide the twenty percent minimum.
Okay, um, and then I had a question about the, the definition, permanent residential occupancy. And in that it indicates, this includes owner occupied or rental accommodation. That is leased for a period of at least one month. Really, one month? Is, that just seems, i- is that something we can make more than one month? Because to me, that's. People coming in and. Having a summer vacation. It would seem like with the second home market and all that, that we would want it to be more than one month. Requirement, I don't know.
Well, and Andrew can maybe talk about what he's seeing out there, but uh, the. The concept here is they're trying to make sure that these units don't get used as short-term rentals. So.
Why not three months or?
Excuse me, sorry. Andrew, what are you seeing out in the world?
Yeah, um, typically for these, um. Uh, the, the main consideration is, um, you can't, you can't apply this to a hotel. You can't apply this to an Airbnb, uh, because it's not the point. There are other jurisdictions where you even find that, um, some people. Uh, try to sneak in office space, and that's also not allowed. The, the definition of one month is drawn from the statute. Again, the statute gives broad authority to the city to expand the definition, so if it is. If, if that makes sense, then that's great. One other thing to note, though, is that, I mean. It, it. It does include that. Specifically to take into account month to month. Um, leasing, so if, if someone is on a month-to-month contract. Someone is renting month to month. Um, they want to make sure that the statute would cover that, so that's the, that's the main reason why that's in there.
It seems, seems pretty. It says occupancy on a non-transient basis. To me, a month is pretty transient.
Yeah, a- again, it's, it's, it's less that someone would come in for a month and then. Leave and more, um. Just taking it into account like month-to-month leasing. That would be long-term, but may just be somebody who um. Is under a, like a. Extended out past their, their, uh, their lease or something like that.
A, a lot of people of lower income don't have this, um. Guaranteed to do long-term leasing and signing a contract for long-term leasing is very intimidating. When they um haven't been able to secure housing. Uh, in the past, or they have job insecurities. Um, so there's a lot of benefits of the state. Mandating it at a month-to-month. For the program to be successful.
Would a, would a? Would a owner even want? Somebody to be there for a month and leave? That's just another question, but.
Oh, I, I can, I can answer that question too, um, in that. One other consideration here is that. Um, the tenant needs to provide evidence that they're making that. Uh, making an income that would qualify for the unit. That's, that's a, a notable amount of administrative overhead and. Um, if somebody's just gonna come in for a month, that's way too much paperwork just for one month, so. Um, I, I understand your, 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 uh, your. Concern about it, though.
And then it talks about fifty percent of multi-housing must be provided for permanent residential occupancy. And it has to apply to the entire development. So let's just go to the Weedner development just for. For an example. So half of his. For the him to do this, one of these programs, half of the. Houses would, or house, ha- half of the units would have to have permanent residential occupancy. I don't quite get that one.
So part of it has to do with mixed-use projects where you've got like. Apartments above, you know, retail or a restaurant or something like that. Uh, it's, again, it, it's following the statute because there are a lot of places where you've got. Um, different uses in the same building and you. Um, the, the commercial improvements aren't. Eligible for the tax exemption. But it just recognizes that, you know, you need to have a minimum amount of space. Allocated to residential for a project overall to qualify. So if it's, if it's like an office building with a few. You know, caretaker units or something, you can't use M F T E to, to um, uh, exempt the value of those.
And, and just one last question. It talks about displacement of tenants, um, potential on, uh. And I'm just wondering who, who would be the advocate for the displaced tenants and to ensure that they're made whole on relocation? Who usually administers that part of it? The city do that would. Would be responsible to ensure that the developer.
Yeah, that's part of their app, like, yeah, the developer has to do it, but the, the developer also has to provide documentation showing what they're doing and how they're doing it.
And that's by the city or?
They provide that to the city, and then the city reviews that. Andrew, do you, have you had experience with that? Particular part of the state allowance?
Um, yeah, it, it's, it's really, all of that is really intended to make sure that somebody just doesn't knock down a building that's perfectly okay to. Build something else. Get rid of a lot of uh tenants that are lower income so that you can, you can raise the rent um on the market units. Uh, typically, it's, um. Uh, you know, the requirement. Just make sure that there's a reason to replace the building or rehabilitate the building. Uh, but u- usually it's just that it's a, it's a step in the application process where you need to pro- provide evidence that. The property has been vacant for a certain period of time, that there are certain code violations. And then if, um. If there were people living in the unit, uh, living in the building, uh, after a certain point. Um, that you've, uh, that you've made considerations for them. So it's, it's something in the application. It's. It's, it's all on Lilith's shoulders, uh, going forward, I guess, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Are there other public with questions or comments? Oh, Polly's here and Anne unmuted herself too, so whichever order you'd like to go in.
Okay, thank you. Um, so. Since we started out talking about the tax shift. And the fact that, um, the, the, the taxes will be shifted to the community, um, basically to the property owners. Of, of that, of our community. So it's just sort of important to think about their economic uh standing also and. And, uh, um, Andrew, you talked about how this has not been used much in the small towns. And that's really understandable because small towns don't tend to have a strong industrial base, a strong earning power. That, you know, to, to do that, you go to a larger city, so. I'm just looking at the, the, uh, I, I know a number, I live here in town. A number of property owners and they are not extra wealthy. As a matter of fact, if you go back to the A M I. Of eighty thousand per year, I'm not sure that they are anywhere near that, 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 much less. The hundred and fifteen percent of ninety-two thousand. So basically. Having them pay the, um, affordable, the, the affordable tax, pro- property tax. When they themselves are very likely in the same category. Doesn't seem like a really good economic way to start this program. That. Um, that there should basically be some test. If a financial kind of a consideration, not just for the people who are applying for the program. But the people who would support the program by shifting, you know, receiving the, the, um, by, by, by giving. To the program so that it can exist. So I'm just thinking that. Um, for what we call low income, sixty-seven thousand, uh, and then A M I eighty thousand and then. Uh, a hundred and ten percent of, of uh ninety-two thousand. Those are all numbers that are frankly way beyond many, many, many property owners here in Leavenworth. And I, I think that it's. Just not a strong way to start the program to have low-income people, who are property owners. Contributing to newcomer, low-income people who are also, who want to buy a house here. But the economic base is not really there, and that comes back to your, uh, to your, uh, statement, Alex, that this has not been done much in small communities. I can see that why that is really true.
Just to, just to note, the reason why I said that this hasn't been done in small communities is more that the state didn't let. Small communities do it until a few years ago. Um. There are. Different conditions in different communities. I totally understand, um, what you're saying in that respect. And, and a lot of it is, is based on, uh. You know, perceptions of need and, you know, priorities and everything. The one thing, uh, the, the two things that I would state. Um, though, one is that in, in many cases. Uh, these programs are intended to support people that are. Already here. Uh, that. You have, for example, folks that are working in the community that are. You know, commuting from other locations where they can find more affordable housing. And this provides an opportunity. To, um, you know, address their housing needs or address the housing needs of people that are just paying too much and trying to stay close to where they work. Um, so I, I, I. Don't want the impression of this program to be that this is serving people that are just gonna come in from the outside and. Take advantage of a program and take advantage of, of property owners. So, um. And I, I, I think that's all that I had to say about that, just to address some of those points, but.
Just that, since we're talking about exemptions, that I think the same standard should be applied so that. Whoever is going to be one of the property owners who is, um, who is meant or encouraged or actually ultimately, uh, forced. To shift their, some of their, uh, money to, um, paying for affordable housing for someone, whether they're in the community or not. It's having one low-income person trying to help another low-income person. Um, is just, it's, I, I think it should be. Anyone who is above whatever is some level. Maybe it's the A M I of eighty, eighty thousand. Maybe it's the. A hundred and ten percent of a hu- of a hundred and fifteen, but those would be the people who would be supporting this program. And the ship, the tax shift would be on their shoulders.
So, um, that is. Something that's very difficult. There are some, uh, tax exemptions that are written into the statute. But it's, it's kind of a con- a state constitution thing where, um. It's a very difficult thing, i- i- it, you can't charge different rates for different, um. Uh, for different property owners unless there's a specific tax exemption that's in the code, so that's. That, that's something that. I recognize the concern, but it's something that can't be incorporated into this program.
So it'd be all or nothing, in other words, everyone would pay no matter what their income is, low or high. Or we don't have this, the, the tax shift to exist as a way of financing this.
That's, that's the way we understand it to be set up, but, um. In the packet, Andrew had provided the example of what that cost would be based on the assessment of a home. And to some extent, maybe people who are of a lower income would have a lower value property and therefore would. Participate at a lower rate. Um, I did want to reach out to the county assessor, though, because of your question. Which you had emailed us earlier today, so thank you for that. But I did want to reach out to them and ask how this assessment might impact people who are already on. A reduced property. a reduced property tax because of their income level. So um, that, that will be a question I'll be asking them.
Thank you, Lilith. I appreciate that. Because there, there is through the county, a, a redu- a reduction in property taxes and it's substantial. And so, uh, and, and clearly, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Andrew, but on the other hand, doesn't this seem to be a case where people are treated differently? Because they have a different income. I mean, that, that has done a lot in our society. As a matter of fact, it's done pretty exclusively, so it seems that there needs to be a way to um, of an element of fairness where people who can afford more would be paying more for, if, if they really wanted this program.
Well, I think I, that, that's a, that's a very uh, complicated topic that I, that we could talk for hours about. I, I, I think for this particular program, you know, certainly recognize that there are um, different facets of it. I think with the scale of the city and with the scale, the likely scale of the program, this is not gonna be a case where uh, tax bills should be increasing by hundreds of dollars. Uh, so that needs to be kept in mind. But again, like, I, I understand the concerns that you have on that, so.
Thank you.
Uh, Polly? So I just, so obviously you guys just saw that affordable house.
Polly?
Oh, could you come up here so the zoom people can hear you? Yeah, all the way up here, please.
I'll speak right here, so if you get close to us.
So yeah, so this is about, oh, obviously affordable housing. So I, my question is, um, you have a statement about that it will be affordable. How do you, how do you monitor that? Uh, I'm thinking of, so somebody moves into one of those and they're single, um, they get a very affordable apartment or a house and they're single, but as they're here, their, their salary increases, they get married, their wife has a salary that increases and all, all of a sudden, they're making more money. How, and, and so then they would actually maybe at some point not be able to um, buy, you know, uh, would not need that, that help. How do you monitor that, to make sure that that program really indeed best services the people?
And, and again, they do have to go through that ongoing qualifying for the rental.
Annually.
Annually. So then, so then if they don't, they could move into a market rate.
So then do they?
Then they free up a affordable one.
Then do they get evicted? I mean, is that something that, do they say, oh, can't move, oh no, can't, I mean, how, how does that work? Where's that at?
Yeah, I, I don't know the um, process, Andrew probably does.
Um, so different cities can, uh, different cities do this in different ways. What is often the case is that um, you won't be evicted from the unit, but you would be required to pay market rent. And then another unit in the same development would be designated as um, income restricted under the program. So then you know, the next person that would rent, they would have to rent it to somebody that would qualify.
How about, how about units that you would buy? Like if it was like.
That is more complicated and this is a problem that comes up with like Habitat for Humanity and other programs that look at affordable homeownership. Um, you're not gonna force somebody to sell uh, if they make more money, but the way that they work with that is in two ways. One is that um, uh, so the way that this program is set up and there's a reason why there's no twelve-year option that we recommended for homeownership because it doesn't work. Um, but when, uh, essentially, um, when you have an affordable housing entity that manages the program, um, like Habitat or, I'm using Habitat as an example, but um, if you're, you know, once you sell it, you need to sell it to someone who uh, qualifies, uh, has, has a uh, tha- that would qualify as low income under the program. So it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, you can't get a job, you can't get married, you can't be making more money. Um, you can't force somebody to sell, but uh, what it means is that over time, you know, the next time it gets sold, it gets sold to a person that would qualify as low income. So it's not a perfect solution by any means and homeownership is where a lot of affordable housing programs can get a little, get a little janky, but.
Okay, thank you.
The incentive is for the, the homeowner to, if they can, to get into the, the speculative market where they could see a much greater gain. Because their gain is limited because it has to stay affordable. So it's there, the incentive's on them if their income increased and they can afford something to get into the regular market where they can see the gain.
Got a couple of questions. Um, they're hard to, hard, hard to reach in my mind, there's, it's such a busy thing evolving back and forth, but you know, um, if, if, if we did this, my, my house value is gonna go up every year. Sometimes the, the, not too far, a lot of that, it went up a huge amount. And so that means that the money that I would be forced, because I feel like it's forced, to give um, would go up. So just saying that it's under ten dollars, that might be today, but five years from now, it might be double. Another ten years, it might be double. So it's not static. It's gonna, it's gonna cost the, the homeowner that's involved in this process more. Um, um, so is that, that, is that gonna affect it anyway? So let's say your house is assessed at four hundred thousand instead, but you can sell it for seven hundred thousand. So that, it doesn't affect that in any way, shape or form?
You mean whether it would uh, not appreciate and value as much or?
Well, as long as the assessor says it's four hundred thousand, I guess you can sell it for whatever you want to. No, you can't. Oh, okay.
Whatever the markup there.
I just think.
Oh, no.
It's behind closed doors, hidden doors, then that doesn't mean that you hid them, it just means there's hidden doors. And I would like to see, the best workshop we ever had was, the look when you first came and the workshop was not at a council meeting, it wasn't at a finding commission meeting, it was in this room and it was full. And people, I, I can't even remember what it was at that time, but people came here, they're not gonna sit through a council meeting, there, it, it isn't gonna happen, except for a few. Uh, but I, I feel like I don't wanna impose this stuff on other people. I think the other, we have to have a big enough thing, go to the fest hall, whatever, I think people will come. And they will, they will, they all have to come for that one thing, just like we did with the pool and um, and learn about this, so they, if it, that were, if they don't want it, they don't want it. If they do want it, they do want it. But that seven people aren't putting it all on everybody. That doesn't feel good to me. If any of that may be in this app. And sixteen units at Widener, huh, that's gonna move that just under ten dollars up a tab. So I mean, there's just too much sliding, you know, like on a steel guitar, where you're like, you slide that bar back and forth. I like it.
Well, thank you, Sharon. I, yeah, thank you, Sharon.
I'm questioning, um, I'm thinking about downstream effects of this program, specifically how annual income requirements might have unintended consequences. We live in a community where we think of housing as runs on a ladder. If we institute this program, you know, those units will be run one, but we already lack runs two and three, we might already lack runs four and five by the time these things actually get built. Because this is an increasingly stratified community economically. So I guess what I'm asking is, have you seen in other communities where folks using this program might choose to churn down offers to make more money or other income benefits because the initial benefits of that extra income would result in a loss of their dwell, because if they wanna move to a market rate, you know, if they made five thousand ex- extra dollars a year and not put them over the level where they're going to market rate, it doesn't matter, they're moving to a niche or rock out somewhere else because you know, it's, it, it would be a massive net loss. Have you seen that unint- unintended consequence come into play in other communities? It might, does that question make sense?
Um, it, it does. Now, um, there are different ways that cities have looked, uh, so it, there are a lot of, there are a lot of different aspects to the, to the question, so I'll try to tackle the big one first. Um, so there are certain solutions that some cities have put forward to try to keep people in these units, even when they exceed like an eighty percent threshold. Uh, the city of Seattle, for example, allows you to make kind of, i- it, it gives you an extra little um, uh, margin that you can go above that level if you're already in a unit. So that you're not displaced, because the big, big point of this is to improve um, housing security, to make sure that you're, you know, a member of the community, that you're, you're um, you're going to be there for the long term. Uh, so there are options. I think though that the biggest consideration here is that this is not a silver bullet, this is not gonna solve all of the problems, this is targeted at a, at a specific income level. This does not do anything for people that are making, you know, half of uh, area median income uh, that are struggling to find any kind of housing that's affordable. So there are other solutions for that. This is just really targeted at one kind of segment at the low income um, uh, part of that market. So I think that that addresses like the big stuff that you were saying, but um, I don't know, is there a?
It's, it seems like too, if we partnered with Mend on the ownership question, they have greater restrictions. So they, they wouldn't be necessarily interested in partnering with anybody if it wasn't inclusive of their long-term program that they have. So well, for the ownership, we should be able to capture some of that as well.
My question was more intended for the rental side of the equation.
And you're saying, and I, I, if I heard you, I, I heard you saying, are they gonna not improve their own lives? Because it's to their detriment if they improve. And I don't know that that would, you know, I know in the, the homeownership side, we saw that people improved and moved on, you know, because that gave them a stepping stone. I don't know that we, how much we would have to fear that they would say, no, I'm not gonna improve myself or take a new job because I lose housing. They look at it as opportunity, they think these.
I, I, I would look at it less from an aspirational, I'm improving myself way to characterize it then, adult and sense. If, if I'm gonna make, find the opportunity to make five hundred extra dollars a month, but my rent's gonna go up fifteen hundred, it's a pretty simple decision. But we're talking taxes, what's, I mean, what's the pass, a lot of taxes? Well, that's a completely different issue. I was talking about, I wasn't talking about property tax, I'm talking about someone who is taking advantage of this opportunity, living in one of these, in one of these units. Yeah, lower income, yeah, yeah. And how they might be, they might be forced to churn down other income opportunities because if we take them over that threshold, that way ultimately ending up losing their place.
Yeah, that's very common in the country, bigger city where people are subsidized, so it has to be that quantum leap, like you're saying, you have to get to that quantum leap to be able to say now it's worth it for me to accept and do that better job, like I was saying. So just give people an opportunity to work in a place where they might make more money, achieve that higher income, have to jump to then one twenty percent AMI, and suddenly that's when it's the safe place. Again, I totally get what you're saying, and then it's not worth it, you're only gonna be a ninety. I think it's perfect.
And I'm not saying that's a reason to ax this whole program, I'm he- I'm trying to work through all unintended consequences.
Sure, one facility. Well, and, and if the unintended consequence though is that there's still productive members working at a job that's needed in the community, then so be it. There's still, you know, again, a part of the community that's providing something and if they choose to not move up because it's a penalty, they'll still be at that level of production and still be a contributing member of this.
I think that was a really important point to bring it back to, I think we're getting really, really far into weeds and keeping the bigger picture of like, the future's been told for this little mountain town and it's not right, where we lose the people that we need to sustain what we have. And so I see the pros list as being much bigger than the cons list. I think you can shoot holes in this program, as we've proven, but the big picture is for those of us that aren't housing secure, uh, you know, we're dependent on all those people to stay here and hold up those parts of our community to develop. Whether it be working at the ERs or working at the school or hospital or, so I don't wanna lose sight of that. Because it might, I, I, I'm not retired and on fixed incomes, so that's coming from somebody that still has a long lot of years to work and dual incomes and it is expensive up here, but um, in my mind, the the pros outweigh the cons and we keep the big picture of why housing is our number one role here in the city. And keep our enterprise and this is not silver bullet, this program's not gonna fix everything, but it's a separate record. So quickly, Jason, you mentioned predicting the future, because they're not special to um, town, but screen meters, they have a separate time outside.
Possibly more of a little American mountain town, we've been told some about where.
Yes, I can hear where they're, we're, we're there or getting. Aspen and Vale, I said. But yeah, I just wanted to touch on that future.
Yeah.
So Betsy has her hand up?
Yep, Betsy.
Betsy, you're muted. Betsy, can you unmute yourself if you'd still like to speak? Well, there she goes.
Okay, okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Um, yeah, I, I'm like to bring up a topic, um, the ground or the lot itself versus the buildings? How is the tax structure differentiated between those two things? I believe I, I understood that uh, the lots would be contin- would be, can you just explain that to me a little more carefully?
Um, so when um, when the assessor gets a, a tax exemption like that, uh, it only applies to like the residential part of the building. So like I was saying before, if there's like a, like a, a, like a restaurant or something, if it's downtown and you got a restaurant on the ground floor, that doesn't count. But you're right in that the lot doesn't count either, so that's still taxed at the full rate. So it's not as if you're getting a full break on taxes, even if it's just a residential building, you're still like paying for the land. Now the assessor, the, like, the assessor's gonna get a bit of a headache in trying to split off the commercial part of the the value, but typically assessors will separate out the land from the improvements because you get a lot of properties where you gotta run down a building, but the land is really valuable and you need to make sure that you're taking that into account uh, for tax purposes. So they typically separate it out separately, so.
So that's just your house, not your garage, not your A and U, not your B and B, just your house?
Well, the, the, the exemption is typically for multi-unit buildings, so if you're talking about like a a condo or something. The parking is a, the parking is a difficult one. Um, if you got a really big building with uh, like set, like a separate parking structure, different assessors will interpret that in different ways. But you're not gonna, i- if, if you got a, like a fourplex that's covered under this program, they're not gonna kind of separate out your garage from everything else.
No, I mean, for the person, for the resident that's paying, then won't be family tax. Is that only on your house? Or if you had anything to do with that included or garage, I know it's not the land, it's just the structure, so.
Yeah, so you, um, so when you have the exemption. Um, all of the owners or the, like, the one property owner of a rental property. Will just pay, won't pay it on the residential part of the, part of the structure, but everything else applies.
And that's for the exempt, we're talking about the people that are applying the use of the. No, and that just gets spread out.
Oh, yeah.
Total value of your.
Land and structure.
So you've got the land, and then you've got your home, right, so it's the garage, your home or your land?
No, it doesn't matter from your side, because it's whatever taxes are being exempted. That are getting spread out to everybody, it's. It's not, and it's based on the total value, you'll get your proportional share of what's being exempt from the rental. That gets me to the.
So, so I'm gonna have to pay ten dollars a month, I mean, a year, let's say. What am I, yeah, ten dollars a year on they, are based on a house at four hundred thousand dollars? Or is there more on your property that would be based on also?
Your total assessed value.
Total assessed value is what it's.
So your house right now has an assessed value of six hundred thousand dollars. It's not breaking out how much is the land and how much is the garage and how much is the house, that is broken out. But they're looking at, they're, what the assessor will do is they'll look at the entire assessed value of your property.
And that will determine your proportional share of. The, of the, of my property, of, or of my house.
Your entire property. Your house, the land, the garage.
You're flip, you're flipping, the, the shift that you pay is a, is a really small little proportion of your total value, so. You know, ten, twelve dollars of the entire assessed value of your property is the shift to you. What's exempt are just the residential units, not the land, and it's only the residential units that are low income, it's not all the residential units. It's just, it's just a percentage that are low income that shift that value to everybody else.
Uh, unless it's in the building.
Well, uh, uh, just to, just to be clear.
Right.
That with the MFT program, the entire residential value of a property is exempted. So that includes the market rate units as well as the low-income units.
And that is different and than what we've talked about in the past, because we, we were just under a misunderstanding, I. I didn't have that clear in my head until Andrew said it tonight. Yeah.
I still don't have it clear, but I, I won't waste it this time, someone can sit with me. Alright, Paulie, Paulie?
Wait, it seems like you can just say. Can you come up here?
Yeah, yeah.
I think I missed that, so what you just said is the assessment's based on, um, the whole project, is that what you're saying? Residential part.
The residential part.
Just the low-income part of the residential.
No.
No, all of the residential, but if it's, but if it's mixed use, like it hasn't. The, the land is not exempt, commercial improvements are not exempt, that is the residential, which it wouldn't be. So, okay, so then, if Lilith, if you're basing that ten dollars on a four hundred thousand dollar amount. Thinking that it was just those, the, it's just a few units, then is it any more if it's the whole project?
Well, that was based on an eight million dollar project, so however many units that eight million, that was what was being spread out.
He's got three hundred units up on, okay, cause we're kind of talking about, yeah.
Right, well, if they included that whole three hundred and got sixty units of affordable, then it would be on the all three hundred. And it would be significantly higher. Yeah, oh, yeah.
So that would be quite a bit more than ten dollars on that four hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
So how do we find that out then?
Well. Again, I don't know, Lilith, you're.
Project individually.
Yeah, this is a big project, so.
Well, it doesn't, no, it doesn't ne- necessarily mean the whole project would come in for that. So they've talked about including a portion of the project, so you got thirty units. And your twenty percent would be, you know, a fifth of those, so then you would have out of those thirty, you would get five, whatever. I'm just saying, just because they're doing three hundred doesn't mean all three hundred would be necessarily in the project.
I'm sorry, they just admitted that it was the whole project.
Yeah, well, okay, it's in the same building is what I heard Andrew saying, so. The initial submittal for the Leavenworth Meadows was twenty-one buildings. With three hundred units, so those buildings that included low income. Providing twenty percent into the rental market could be included in this program if they chose to do so. Um, how would that pencil? Uh, I don't have in front of me, but I do have in the office the assessed value or the. Estimated construction values for those structures. And so I could look it up, it seems to me like most of the structures were between. For the apartment buildings were between four to six million each.
So do I hear you saying, and again, that it's only the buildings that are low income housing, is that what you're trying to be, not all of the buildings from projects? Is that what I think you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, Andrew, so this development has. Was originally proposed with twenty-one different buildings. So if they chose to be part of the program and only three of the buildings had the low-income units. It would just be those three buildings that would, residential buildings that would be exempted.
Okay, I thought that you had said then it's the whole, the whole project. Oh, all the residential.
Let, let's hear what Andrew has to say.
Yeah, I, I, so a, a few different things, um, one is. Um, just to, just to reinforce it, it's, it's. Um, I mean, typically, it's, it's, you're talking about an individual property, but. If you're doing it in phases or you're separating out kind of, um, different portions of the site. Uh, it's certainly possible that it would only apply to certain areas, and it will only be a percentage of the units in those areas. Um. To give a sense of scale, the, the total assessed value of property in Leavenworth is almost seven hundred million dollars. I think that the point that was made before, um, with respect to ensuring that you're, you're not, um. Uh, kind of overwhelming the existing tax base makes sense. This is something that, um, you know, uh, there are a few different solutions, I know that. Um, the city of Olympia was concerned about, you know. Something very similar, like getting a lot of applications and getting a bit overwhelmed. Where they wouldn't be seeing, um, uh, property taxes from new development that would be going in downtown in, in any case. Um. There are steps that council can go through. When approving the development agreement associated with MFT E. To ensure that if it's a huge project. Um, you're not just giving a pass to like a hundred million dollar project that somehow decided to park itself in town. So, I don't want the, there to be this belief that, um. You know, if this ordinance passes, then it's gonna be, you know, this huge risk that you're gonna get. Hundreds of dollars of increase in your property tax bill. There is the possibility for council to step in and say, this is too big of a project, we don't know if we can do this, um. Uh, we can only, uh, we, we can only take a certain portion of this development, we. Can't take all of the, we can't exempt all of the value, uh, for a, for a large multi-year project that's. You know, hundreds of millions of dollars or something like that. So I, hopefully that's, that's clear, I mean, there is flexibility the council has in. You know, talking with developers and negotiating with them in approving the contract associated with this, so.
Okay, so, uh, just, just to be clear, um. So what you're telling me, Andrew, is that, uh. It is, yes, including the whole project as well as the, the low-income part, or it is no, it's not the whole project, it's just the low income? Or it's, you can do anything you want, but it's, it's the project I'm talking about?
Okay, so if you're looking at a piece of land, and you're looking at a building on a piece of land. The exemption would apply to the residential portion of the entire building on that piece of land. If you're talking about a project with multiple buildings, there's possibility of like some, like potentially dividing it up. But if you're looking at one building and one plot of land. It is the exemption on the entire residential portion of the, the, the value. And that, that helps, honestly, that helps it pencil out, because it, what it means is that. You're getting the exemption over the full building and you're. Um, supporting, um, twenty percent of those units as affordable, so you're getting like five times the benefit. Um, of the exemption on those units instead of spreading it out. If you spread it out, it would never pencil, you wouldn't be able to use it as an affordable housing tool.
Okay. And then we'll wrap it up here and carry it over to the next year.
So, that, my, my question on that would be, should some additional language be put into the code that addresses larger projects? And maybe only portions of larger projects being considered or something like that?
Always the, the possibility when the project comes to us that we can say it's, like I said, it's too big, we can do. X, X number of units and the thing that we want to go, whatever, so I mean, that's, that doesn't, um, yeah.
So that doesn't need to be written down anywhere so that people don't feel discriminated against or something?
Well, yeah, there's no harm in modifying the draft code, so Andrew and I'll look at that to make sure that the council has that. Uh, flexibility written in, so the developers aren't surprised. Um, but the city councils, as these come through, will be responsible for reviewing and approving them too, so. It's a, it's a great point, very good discussion tonight, thank you also very much for participating.
Yeah. Good comment, we should, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on, our next item is a public hearing. We've got our six-year transportation improvement plan, we're gonna have a public hearing on that. And that public hearing means that we do have to have it a little more formalized, we do ask that anybody that. Participates in the public hearing does give us their name and address. Uh, and speaks again, uh, just to the council and just make the comment, it's not a question and answer time. It's a, uh, hearing time, so that's the, the point of the public hearing. And so I will, um, call this public hearing to order at eight thirty. Um, and Tom will open up by presenting the staff report.
Taking that point, again, there with my voice here. So this public hearing is associated with an amendment to our six-year transportation improvement plan, the intent here is to. Amend the plan to include four additional projects that were not on the original transportation improvement plan. Projects are as follows, one is the Ski Hill Drive, active transportation improvements, phase two. This is a continuation of sidewalk on Ski Hill Drive from Evans to Pine Street. This project was partially funded through the Transportation, uh, Council, so in order to accept those funds. It needs to be in our adopted transportation improvement plan. Second, curb ramp improvements project, this again is associated with transportation grant funds, this was. Uh, this grant was applied for through the Transportation Improvement Board and is required to be on our tick in order to be eligible for funding. The movement drive, uh, Ward Strass sidewalk improvements project. This project will fill a sidewalk gap from US two to, uh, Zelt Strassa, this was identified. Uh, as a gap initially, uh, a few years ago, but it never was on the tick. And if it's adopted to do this tick process, it provides more opportunity for off-site pedestrian mitigation, future private developments. Um, it's difficult if it's not on the adopted tick. Lastly, Shoal Street rig construction project, this is in addition due to the sewer failing on this project, so you have full sewer replacement set just lining it. Uh, road needs to be re, rebuilt, so this will give us more tools when applying for grant funds. That's the gist of it, man.
Bye. Any questions? Any comments and questions from the public, comments? Uh, that's convenient, right, do it, so I will then at eight thirty-two. We will close the public hearing and move on to our next item, which is. An action item on the six-year transportation improvement plan, and I noticed Tom, now. This is not a good time for you to not have a voice, you've got all.
I'm wondering if I can help.
Well, alright. You want to, uh?
I would just be repeating what I just said.
Okay, item ten, somebody want to move?
Lover City Council moved the approved resolution fourteen, twenty-three, and then it said twenty, twenty-four, twenty-nine transportation improvement.
Moved by Jason, segmented by Anne, any other questions? All those in favor, let's hear him. All, passing unanimously. Action, item eleven, um, again, I'll be brief.
So need was identified for a skid loader, the waste water treatment plant, and the primary reason is because. Since the upgrade, they have to, they have to move five fifty-five gallon totes of polymer. So chemical injection was not in, in, in use prior to this upgrade. So set right now, they just move it by hand, sometimes they'll borrow the, the lift, the, the forklift, excuse me. Secondly, um, right now, when there's a large snow event, the wastewater division has to wait for a skid loader to become available. And they could blow up the wastewater treatment plant, which would allow them to have their own skid loaders, so they could conduct around the snow and local operations, right? Being in their shift, and lastly, this would serve as a critical backup to the utility division, because right now if we have a large. Skid loader that goes down, we don't have the backup, so this would serve as a backup to keep the sidewalks open. Uh, I do want to note that we did have a forty-five thousand dollar budget for this, but due to setting this budget. Uh, you know, a year ago, coupled with the fact they were transitioning from Bobcat to Cat because they're no longer local. Costs have increased, however, we do have sufficient funds in the sewer fund to cover the budget difference. In fact, Shet, I'll just point out that we over budgeted for the forest management location, so we'll surplus funds there, we go over to cover this.
We're fully shifting from Bobcat, now we're Cat. Yes, Cat, in our Skid Steer all the, yeah, well, Skid Steer's. Okay.
Yeah, work, yeah.
That's good, thanks, I know we have one, one Bobcats.
This will be a four, we have two large ones and a small one right now, so three, yeah, this will be a cat, this, this will be a cat, not a one.
You have to store spare parts and you work on some work yourself, so that's, that would be best.
Right, and all of that other equipment is Cat too, so I maintain, so, so, similarly, actually.
Approximately how long does it take to skip load, yeah?
I'd have to, a space, well, it's Skid Steer and the blower, I'm, I'm totally guessing, but it takes a couple hours, so.
Hey, I will entertain a question.
I'd actually like to add something. Um, this definitely brings up something we talked about in depth last week, I would like to ask city council to. Potentially contain the idea of taking this expert snow blower and adding into our fleet to. Create a list of residents who want their burn lung. Say, hey, here's a list of people who would like their burn lung, now we have this expert equipment, we can send it out. To the, to cater to the people who have four-foot burners now in front of their house, and the city could go and clean that whole.
Okay, if you don't have the staff. Then staff can pass it to support that. That's a Tom decision.
Yeah, it would be an on-call, hey, we just got a list on, make an online list and say, hey, I would like my burn lung. And because there are a lot of people who can't handle that, they're desperate, trying to get out of their driveways, no, the majority of the time, the burn's not bad. Literally, it's six inches or so, people like, oh, I mean, heavy situation, which we require all of staff, but now we have the expert there. They'll be done in two hours, send it out, but they're in the wastewater treatment stuff. Don't I get that, but then public utilities can say, hey, we're gonna grab the blow, the, the. And go out and to pursue that list of people, when they are done with their. And go out and pursue that list of people when they are done with their job. I would say, yeah, we'll get to you within seven hours, but these were available. But if you want, it was really soon.
And I can't remember coming ahead of. I know we went through this last year and we penciled out the resources that would take after we flushed my memory, but.
You did a great job with that, but now we have half the resource, the equipment. The other half is the staff. Right. So I would just like to add that.
I think these are completely separate issues, but I. I support having a deep, deep conversation about firm and. Deep conversation, but it'd be actually no part of their map that I got.
What's your?
My question. I'm already taking level where the city council moves to approve the purchase of a new twenty twenty-three pack. Two thirty-six D three skid steer loader equipped with snow blower in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, eighty hundred ninety-three dollars.
Second.
Okay, moved by Clint, seconded by Ian. And the other questions?
That's a screen and deal. Seven three grand. Is that a Google? Yeah, that's a screen.
Okay, all in favor, let me see your hands. That's unanimous, lady.
Thank you very much.
And then the answer was, yeah. Some bear wise update. Okay.
All right, I have some notes here. I'll try and make as proof as possible, but. So I just the intent here is just to update council on our bear wise efforts. Um, a little bit of backstory. So we've been partnering extensively with Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife, Defenders of Wildlife, and the Cascade School District. Full goals to up our bear wise efforts. Um, as councils aware, defenders wildlife, they donate forty ninety-five gallon bear resistant trash totes manufactured by Kodiak. We we've taken delivery of those. The school district tested implemented about half of them. And the other half were started to. Scattered throughout the city. So for example, Ru Loo's and La Havelina have been dealing with their extensive bear issues recently. So right now there. Bear activity is very high. Fish and wildlife has closed Blackbird Island due to safety concerns. So. Um, they want to just keep folks off Blackbird for the time being. Uh, they're obviously getting ready to go into their, you know, sedated state torpor hibernation, if you want to call it. With that being said, though, um. So we're implementing these four, these these Kodiak totes. There's some logistics with this because. Most of our accounts are three hundred gallon totes. There is not a manufacturer that makes three hundred gallon totes. Uh, one thing I want to get from the council tonight is that there's. Interest in us pursuing. Basically. The first three hundred gallon bear proof tote in existence. So Kodiak is the manufacturer that makes the ninety-five gallon totes. They will make a three hundred gallon tote. They actually have a concept. They just never mass produce it yet. So if we enter a little contract with them, they'd be willing to manufacture it for us. Uh, the cost to get to get three hundred down. Three hundred, three hundred gallon totes is about six hundred fifty thousand dollars. And a chunk of that is retool fees because they're just not quick. They're not quit. To to make the mass produce them. So they need a little bit of. Capital upfront. And frankly, I didn't plan this by legal counsel to see if it's possible. I don't know if we buy by contract or what, but simply it's sole source proprietary. Nobody makes them. Correctly trust. No.
No, they'd be like our system.
Yeah. So they do. They would replace our.
And we get a percentage of their future. Not just three of them, that's six hundred. Two thousand three hundred. Okay, I only have three and I thought, oh, my God.
The bear will not get into that.
So. And also, uh, lastly, I just want to. Shout out to Push Wildlife and Defenders of Wildlife. The. Push Wildlife, they did this. All this custom outreach for free. They did it for us. So we have a couple of signs that we're going to deploy here and at the fest hall, maybe at the chamber. I don't know. And then a number of magnets and just other. Bear wise related outreach materials.
Is it weather first? We can put it outside.
So Tom. Um. Capital three hundred. Is that right away?
So we have a hundred and. Forty accounts and selling them in multiple totes. So three hundred would. Replace everything if they miss any toy.
And the and the, but the idea is. They need enough of them. Could be worked on.
Right to to.
That's why they need that.
Well, and so for the retool fee, we would also have to pay for it. But it's to give us an extra bit, extra totes. Cause there's there's going to be more that are needed.
About twenty-one hundred bucks a piece.
Yeah. And that's shooting sales tax. That's all I think so.
Can we garbage fund the board now? Sorry, it's cheering. I cut you off.
No, no. Not right now.
Look, fishing wildlife may be willing to give us some money. They're still working.
Do the totes close like the other ones? So they're sealed?
Right, they are, but because of the size, they have to meet certain criteria. Like if somebody gets trapped in there, there has to be like a fleece.
Can you can the truck pick them up?
Uh, yes. With three hundred gallons now, so.
Um, I don't use social media to communicate with babies, but yes, told me that. Someone was uh saying on social media that they have a bear cam and that the bear got into it. Anyway. I don't know whether that's because they didn't close it right or, you know, whatever.
But bear resistant, not bear proof, sorry.
They're what?
They're bear resistant. They're not bear proof.
Okay.
I'll tell you this ninety-six gallon one out here. I tried for twenty minutes to break into it. Couldn't figure out.
The compost.
And it it is just this little lever, but you have to know right where that lever is.
You go real easy when you know where it is.
When the bear knows where the lever is.
Close the magnets going in this situation. I picked one up today when I was upstairs. I didn't know that's what it was from, you know? I just did it because I thought it was cute and put it on my refrigerator, but it's really nice. They're really nice.
Yeah. So um, in a nutshell, that's where we're at. And um, I just wanted to give an acknowledgement to Camille Stad. She's been very open about her. Experience of being attacked by a bear. Last year, she really wants to help the community. So she's going to do interviews for Show Wildlife and try to do a story about it. I might met with her and she's. Yeah, she's going to do whatever she can to help spread the spread the message. So.
She's still comfortable. But I'm good.
Well, that's it. The story gives me, it gave me chills. So that's where we're at, bear wise.
All right. Great to um have good partners and. And. Be moving forward. Um, are there grants out there for this kind of thing? Like the defenders write for grant or or half or place some additional brands?
So they, I mean, they gave us twenty thousand dollars in totes and actually an additional ten. So that would, yeah, so twenty-five thousand dollars in totes. Six.
Maybe you can get money for being the the bear tote staff of all of the.
Fish and wildlife, they may be able to help cover perhaps the retool fee because they know the benefit of this.
But um, what do we? We have bear toasting. What's our account? Start of bear toasting now at in operation. We have bear to.
So we have. We have about twenty twenty.
Twenty.
Yeah, and line chairman are at the school district.
And where are we issuing to movements? Like you said, there's someplace to have any.
Ru Loo's Pizza and La Habana are doing a big. Get right now. The old Goodman food.
Does the golf, of course, have their things because I know when you were out there the other day. Uh, she said that the bears were out there now. And so I wondered.
I don't.
They they don't. They don't. Maybe they should.
Yeah, yeah.
Would it be cheaper to have a chain link fence contractor? Free torturers.
Some in truck.
The alley, they're so it's so tight in the alley and then someone's going to unblock them.
That's a question. I think they turned that up at golf court.
Did they?
Yeah, I think the bear could find right.
Yeah, I was thinking we'd close, but. Oh, yeah. Yeah, right, everybody.
So we.
I know what Yellowstone did.
We have. So. We've discussed internally, try um. Potentially bringing. Code before council for discussion. Bear wise code that would require. Our residents, because the problem isn't just downtown. It is downtown, but it's not just downtown. And I see. Most people in my neighborhood put their trash out on Sunday night instead of Monday morning. Um. So we discussed potential floating before council of code change bear wise code that would require. People to either. Rent a waste management or a bear resistant tote from waste management. Or um, secure their garbage until the night before. If they have a garage or a shed, they could keep their garbage in. So that people don't have their garbage out, you know, um, overnight. Tracking bears. It'd give people the option. If you don't have the ability to keep it enclosed. I think waste manager charges the next. I think they charge. They they do charge. I don't know what they cost. They have them available. They charge for it and they make you rent the dollars. You can't just buy them. Twelve dollars a month?
Twelve or fifteen, I can't remember.
Yeah, that's not. So.
Well, that's it. That's enough to probably pick up also that would be for your pan. What would that be? Starts picks up. Probably a man.
So waste management would would rent you a tote like you have currently. That would be a bear resistant one. And that you could just leave out. Because the bears can't easily get into.
So would the garbage truck have to come out and alter it?
No, no, they are. When they pick them up and they turn them upside down, they are not. They do like wait Winton. Composting right now, they use bear resistant totes. We have one out in city hall parking lot. That's what Chantel was talking about. Uh, and they pick them up. When they turn them upside down, the mechanism releases and everything drops out.
Let's go and ask for some reports. There. I'll be back.
Oh, time's up, Sharon.
Yeah, again, we'll we'll make it even quicker. Okay, September thirteen. I uh attended the RFA board meeting. Jason will report. I'm sure September eight, these storms that will pass this week. Um, and it's been a long time now that they're end up getting open here in the budget really. And um, the COVID variants are hopefully there knows this out again. And um, creating, uh, starting to create a pretty uh bad situation. So they do. Ask you to um, think about getting getting shots that they. Mentioned. There is a group of folks that are totally against. Shots, so you you know, wherever wherever you lie. September eighteenth, mosquito district board and they kind of recap the season. Not much is happening happening right now with mosquitoes currently, but they noted that this year there were more mosquitoes this season. And they're tying up their budget items and taking a look at how twenty twenty-two matches up with twenty twenty-three. September nineteenth, they went to the indoor view. They'll be steadily studying. Republic forum and Jason, I'm sure will report on that. September twentieth. Um, uh, back tapping the school lunches, happy game. They're on Wednesdays at nine in the morning. At the United Methodist Church. All who would like to help are welcome. September twentieth, the Jump Dick Wildfire stewardship coalition. They uh talked a lot about this pilot plant development of for bio char. And on a hundred acres, they studied, Winton will be part of it. Um, I'm not going to try to explain anything um because my camp would be pretty understandable since I don't understand very well, but it's really interesting. To listen to, but to be able to be vegetated that is not happening. Um, you should have been sent an email this afternoon with an invite to the next um. Uh, CWST meeting at the fire hall on October fourth at six P M. Level work in Washington's top wildfire hotspot. Fire Commissioner Ross Frank gave us a list of things the city could do at the firewise meeting at recently at city hall. And I say, let's get going. Um, I'm hearing, you know, different people on the council talking about it. We need a committee. Um, but we need to do something. We can't just sit on information. We have a not move on it. We, you know, we're at the top in Washington state. September twenty-second, friends of the library, book sale began. It's open seven days a week for a total of three weeks at downtown. September twenty-third, the Lions bought breakfast. Uh, did their last summer season um. Uh, breakfast. And on September twenty-third, also in the afternoon, the autumnly festival parade, which was um just tons and tons of fun. The weather was beautiful. This morning, I went to downtown steering committee meeting and I'll let Quigs Z for W handle that. And um, that's my imagine. What you.
Right. This morning I did attend a portion of the downtown steering committee. I was not able to attend the entire meeting. I had to step out. Uh, for a good portion of it, it was due to a structural uh obligation. So. Uh, it's big plan to do Z for uh Selby, but that's exactly what I. Back in.
Thank you.
Listen.
Yeah, our P R S A meeting was last, let's see, it was on the thirteenth and we had a pretty full agenda, but we spent the entire time talking about last week's. Open house about the indoor feasibility study. Um. So I think we skipped almost everything. Pretty much that's it. Uh. So really interesting. Yeah, our our consultants N A C architects got on in front of the public. I think we had. About eighty people there. So I sat up there for just moral support. I didn't really have anything to present on, but. Uh, after their presentation, there's a lively community discussion. A lot of concerns. Um, obviously the cost was big ones. We're talking about a twenty-nine dollar project. So people gasped with the cost. There's also concerns with um the sighting of, you know, having this of the existing pool location versus Osborne. What happened to Osborne? Uh, there was a comment about we didn't know that we were substituting an outdoor pool for an indoor pool. And I was caught flat-putted on that question. And afterward I realized. When the P R S A started looking at a year round pool, our vision was retractable. So it wasn't going to be either more. It was going to be both. Uh, but we quickly learned that that was not a good option for climate and. The mechanics of it just uh. Creating a lot of maintenance. Um. So they presented basically three types of structure, a sprung structure, which sounds like a circus tent, but it's insulated. It's metal. Reinforcements with insulated fabric. Uh. Not super aesthetic for our town right here. Uh, and it doesn't create the outdoorsy atmosphere that we want for an indoor pool. We want a lot of windows. We want to have state views. But it's less expensive. Uh, a more traditional build aquatic center. And then in addition to that, the third option is a big aquatic center with what we call dry side amenities. So you can go in there and exercise through other dry side exercises. That increases the cost to build. It slightly increases the cost to operate, but it also increases your potential revenue. So that makes it attractive. Uh, there's concerns around this becoming a tourist thing, but we also. Acknowledge that we need tourists to help pay for it. So a lot of kind of arm wrestle, even at the P R S A, like. Mark Bill and I at P R S A, we aren't wrestle over the values, what we want. Because the survey results that we got were very big. People want to be around pool and that's all the information that we got. So our follow-up survey asked more about amenities. It's a giant project. I've been attached to the outcome of having this happen because I've been working on it for six years, but I've now kind of let go of that and realize if it's going to happen. The public needs to take the reins. So we've recruited almost a dozen people and we're kicking off a meeting. Let's say Tuesday, Thursday night from six thirty to eight, the small group of people. And we're looking at kind of forming a booster club kind of thing where the P R S A would be more in a supporting role instead of a leadership role. And we have a lot of high-powered intelligent people here that are motivated to get this done. We would, if this moves forward, we would need a serious capital fundraising campaign, which the P R S A is not equipped to do. We can barely get a levy pass, passing with three more cents. So the P R S A has very limited. Um. Authority, power, decision-making.
Are we having?
Really good to me is the public. Ultimately is who we are trying to satisfy. And so it will be on the public to do the outreach. Do the necessary due diligence. And then come forward like we did on the thirteenth. But that's coming from a public-driven process, not a government-driven process. So it feels like this really perfect, beautiful evolution of this project. So. That was. I just took up a lot of wind, but um, that's it. Pass it on.
Jason, just. Yeah. We we need to. Yeah, there is a negative point.
Oh, really? Wow. Yeah, that's cool to know, Sharon. Yeah, I can't. Yeah, that's cool to know, Sharon. Yeah, I can't believe I keep getting emails saying add me to the list, add me to the list, but it's gonna get unruly. First thing we're gonna do is elect a chair. I'm sure North is gonna say.
Uh last Monday on the eighteenth, the economic committee got together and we scored all the applicants for the Love Worth Fund. Under the general fund. Uh group of money as well as the lodging tax fund group of money. Uh we spent. Almost four hours together.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it it's it's an annual big project.
Hey, it was quicker than last.
Yeah, a lot more than one meeting.
I'm more proficient.
Alright.
Um and uh keep adopting our scoring sheet. So that it is not only easier for applicants to understand, it's also easier for us to equitable support people. Uh so we're we're actually getting it getting it done, but we have um. We scored everything and uh. Not everybody, but um those that qualify and met criteria under each. Fund in the Love Worth Fund. It's funding for their organization or their event for twenty twenty one.
Great.
Well done.
Great, thanks, Anna. So I attended a pool discussion and um. Sharon and Jason, and I, that's why I brought that up is that I think that the only way. Where are we gonna build? If it be definitely what he wants, the only way to build a twenty million dollar plus. Pool is you have multiple discussions like that where. All those questions. These get addressed, misconceptions get clarified. It's just gotta happen. That's that's how that's been work. And that's why I'm suggesting that. We don't, that this M T uh F M. Multi family tax exemption has one of those, I think. It's worth our time, slow this down. It's evident tonight that y'all don't really understand it. The way we want to, you know, we want the community to be at peace with it. We gotta give them a chance. We gotta give ourselves a chance to explain it to them, so. I really recommend some discussing for. Uh multi family tax exemption before we get too far down the road, just think that's the way. You're gonna keep the crap off social media because you already dealt with it in public discussion, so anyway, that's that's one of my visions. I met uh a good time, I had a good hour with Bill at um. Mitigation at Alba Globe, trying to get a handle on how that was working. Really appreciated that time, uh Bill. And then the last pitch, which. And kind of forgot, but we were, oh, we're good. Um.
Oh.
So as as veteran autumn leaf paraders. Two of us and Sharon included, one of the recommended, we're rested by finding council members that have the next chance you have being a parade. Stood up with your tractor and you. Show up because it was twenty eight minutes. That's all the parade was. Fun and and uh we want more company, so.
I should, I don't know.
So anyway, there's the fish.
I I will piggyback on that. Autumn Leaf specifically is a city festival. It is our very first city festival. Uh and it basically celebrates our very and I would like to have a future conversation with Mr. Council about having this potentially be a mandatory one that city council.
I had.
And I'm not looking at you. Does everybody have other things going on in life, but I think if we plan really far ahead and have a conversation about it.
I've been in it five times. Been in it five times, I've driven fire.
I know. Anyway. That's the end of my report. Thank you, Ann.
Yeah.
Um, well, and you know, if we want to bring up the autumn leaf parade, I was actually playing in the uh large cup hockey tournament for adults, I mean, for actually. So there I was, I mean, I was. Checking cheese instead of waving.
That's my next on Mars.
Yeah, that's the large cup. Anyway, and yeah, they also do please. Um the for grab verid association here is still in the same facility. Did take on some of the money that was offered to us, um two hundred fifty thousand dollars was offered to burn well. Burning land was the best way to make it more fire resilient across the street, so we got eight to ten landowners reply. We're gonna have a meeting with more information and explaining that we may start burning this fall. Getting people's land ready for strive burning, which I think I wanna, I would say that the gold standard for fire resiliency here in viewers. Not, obviously, we're not gonna be running structured. Oh, God. Preventing structures from ember intrusion would be the other. Um so that's pretty exciting for me. And uh. But I think I attended a couple of Cascade Hill soccer team, soccer teams from my last one, they didn't do well. Swam in river. It'd be two degrees.
Alright, thank you. Um I reported some of my meetings earlier, so I won't go over those, but um and I also attended the Association of Long City. Board had a board retreat um. In Shalane, so it wasn't too far, probably had a. Even halfway with some of the others and. Um again, I think it's gonna be a good place to uh. It it didn't take me long to to earn the the uh the housing uh. Uh members of the board there with uh. Uh with our discussions and that, which I'm, I will probably be there because um. As you know, it's critical, critical means, so, but I feel like it's a place where we can hopefully um where I can help impact. Um in the state, some of the state things too, because they do a lot of work. And that, so hopefully it'll bear weapon worse improved as well. Felt good to be there. Um and that's it for me now, Selby.
Well, speaking of association in Washington cities, I'm not sure if everybody realizes that. Mayor Carl Florrie. Um has been recognized by the A W C, not just for being on the board, but he's been granted an advanced certificate in municipal leadership. So kudos to Carl for going through all that training. Um eleven worth funds, yes, uh we uh met eleven awards. Totalling thirty eight thousand two hundred dollars will be made from the general fund. And eighteen awards totaling one hundred and twenty one thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars will be made from the lodging tax fund. The unadmitted funding from twenty twenty four will be rolled over into next year's grant program. A shout out to Sue Craig and for her tireless tireless efforts, putting the application together and working with applicants to get all their i's dotted and t's crossed. And thanks to council members Hesper, Lack and Aurelio for taking a Monday night away from their families for this process. Um the these awards will be um at your next meeting for approval by council. Um. The Jason already talked about the forum. I just wanted to say kudos to Sue Craig and and Brandy Minnet for helping organize and set up for that forum. Um.
Second that, shouldn't say that.
Uh Saturday, I was privileged to participate in the autumn leaf parade along with the mayor and his wife and. Council members Hesper and uh Reaster, and thank you to the autumn leaf organizers for the invitation. I'll take any excuse to wear waiter hose. The downtown steering committee met this morning and received an update on the parking study that Rick Williams Consulting is currently working on. Um there will be forthcoming very soon, a parking survey. For residents, business owners, workers and visitors, and it will be launched in time for Oktoberfest. We tried to get in time for autumn leaf, but it wasn't quite ready. The committee also heard from plant ally business owner Brittany Thurlow about her experience with visitors struggling with parking and finding restrooms. Um at her commercial street location, she's right next to Robert Johnson's dirt lot across the street from Pensy on Anna. I stopped in on Thursday and chatted with her and got an in in interesting perspective on what. She is seeing um with traffic flow changing now that Front Street is closed. And she feels like her restaurant is, or her business is the first place that a lot of people are stopping. Um and she's witnessing a lot of frustration dealing with their meters. I'm sure that we're gonna see a lot of this come out in our survey. And we understand, we know that the meters are not flawless, um and. And folks, people, people do struggle.
The town included, you don't put your chip in first.
Yep. Yep, yeah, it is crazy. We're not happy with that technology, um and we are looking at other options. And this Thursday, oh, sorry, I didn't finish with that. Um the downtown steering committee continues to review the downtown closure plan um by M X M. And and the recommendations in that report and the next meeting will uh revolve around the Royal Lady Plaza location and what. Whether it really needs to be where it had been proposed. For so long, given that all of Front Street is now basically closed to the park, so does it really need to go right next to Munchen House or should it go somewhere else? Um this Thursday, we will have our first all staff professional development day at High School Village Resorts. Um with training from Hannah Butler from Ash Consulting, as well as lots of fun activities for staff. So we'll look forward to that. Thank you.
So. Pray for sunshine.
Alright, yeah, right. Or at least no rain, huh, no. Chantel.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Uh council, the last week I spent uh. Most of it enjoyably with Deputy Clerk Shirley McLaughlin. We were at the Washington Finance Officers Association Conference in Spokane. Garnered a lot of good new information and just restoration of why we do what we do and why we work so hard in finance to make sure everything is taken care of and. Legally within parameters set by the council in most cases. Well, just a little insight into some project work that Shirley and I are. Delving into heavily over the next three months. We are rolling out implementing electronic time sheets for our staff. We're not gonna make you guys do that. We already fill yours in for you and make sure you guys get your stipends as well as the other board members for for their meeting assignments. Um but we are planning to do that for the forty eight full time F T E that we have and. It is quite a project to implement.
You don't have electronic, no, that's not where you live.
We have, people currently fill it out in an Excel spreadsheet that we have pre programmed with a lot of. Uh they can only do certain things, which which is great, because then they can't mess it up. But no, this is gonna be fully functional. They can do it from their cell phone. They can do it from their uh. Computers, it'll go directly to their supervisor, their supervisor can approve, it goes directly to the director. And then the director goes to us and then we push a button and it uploads into payroll. So, yeah, it it is gonna save hours of payroll process.
Twenty first century.
Yeah. So that's one piece. Um, by the way, that plan implementation, when we. Uh met with the consultants, they said it takes a minimum of six months. We are pushing hard to roll this out in four. So it's a lot of time for Shirley and I. Uh the next thing we're gonna be looking into, Selby actually brought this to my attention when he went to, I think it was the I C M A conference, he brought back some uh. Paperwork about virtual card payments for accounts payables. Basically get rid of what we do today, which is cut checks to everybody. Instead, you cut. A virtual check to them through credit card number that's generated. People push a button on their email that they've received this money from the city. As soon as they push the button, the funds are transferred. So it is a faster process for folks to get paid. The perk for us, we get one percent cash back. On it if they participate. Now the downside to this is I learned a lot of vendors do not want to participate because they are having to pay the credit card transaction fees. So we'll see how that goes. Um Airway Heights has led the way with that particular project in our state. She's been doing it now for three years with this same particular company that I spoke with at my conference. Got all their literature again. And I spoke with uh the gal from Airway Heights today. So we're gonna do the time sheet first and then twenty twenty four, my goal is to look into this and see if we can go virtual with. Accounts payables for a lot of that as well. Um I would like to say that Tom and I planned this. It was not planned though. I guess it was just fate for him to have the six year transportation improvement plan uh. Hearing tonight, as well as the resolution that you passed, but if you get a chance. In your packet is my monthly finance report and down in the bottom is a nice little did you know? And my did you, did you know happened to be about the fact that we're managing fifteen current active grants. This is up from eight in twenty twenty two, and I give you some other data in here about transportation and the fact that we have expended. Over eight point nine million dollars in. Street projects over the last. I think uh thirteen years is in here. Um actually, it's more than eight point nine. That's just in retail sales tax, eighteen point four million, excuse me. Uh so the average per year that Public Works has been doing is one point four million in street projects a year. So we are doing significant amounts. I know it's hard to see at times, but we are consistently doing street projects, whether it's repairs or full street rebuilds.
And Tom, we're not gonna let you talk. Yeah.
He's right there.
I know, oh, I was gonna say, uh shout out to all the staff that made Autumn Leaf happen. There's a quite bit of coordination that goes on between city staff and Autumn Leaf. Um other. Love Autumn Leaf Association. Um. So, yeah, again, Rick Emmons' institutional memory and how everything worked two years period, because this year was my first year. When it was normal, I guess, this first year was COVID, last year was Cascade Orchard Bridge, so. Still opportunity for refinement as we move forward, as we learned earlier with corporal hands. Um. One bear wise update I forgot to give is that Fish and Wildlife, they've installed a bunch of bear activity signs throughout the trail system. You'll see new signs posted throughout. Throughout the city parks.
That is really cool. Pretty impressed with that.
Yeah, they've been a great partner for sure. Um I just want a shout out to Rick and his utility maintenance perfectly repaired their. Board recent water leak, uh this one was up on Mountain Home Road. Ah it was a real pain in the neck because we have these plastic PVC community water lines that were put in many years ago where. Technically private. But nobody is gonna say, oh, yeah, that's our leak, we'll fix it, no problem, so. We have to hunt and pack and find valves, and this one valve had a bunch of spikes welded on it for tamper proof, so no one could turn it.
Also, out of the bomb road.
Yeah.
We run city water.
Yeah, so.
A little bit, not all the way.
It would be nice to just get these community water lines out here. There's another one on Shore Street that is just like scheduled for to PVC that is just brittle, that we don't maintain. So if there's a leak, there's really no incentive for somebody to fix it. But it's just. Lost water. Opportunity. Flows just right now, so.
There's other words for that.
So. Yeah, so, yeah, we'll investigate that further. Uh the fire hydro replacement project is near completion. We just have a couple left. I will state that there was a number of unforeseen complications, for example, valves not closing. So we had a hard time isolating some of these areas. Uh which resulted in widespread shut water shutdowns, which is not ideal. Um there was rock excavation and then service line conflicts. Obviously, this is slow process, but without doubt, it's increased the cost of that replacement project. Kurt McNutt is being poured on Steve O'Driscoll tomorrow. Um great news, we found a replacement for Tracy Valentine, Chris Clank, he's a water plant operator from Stevens Pass. He's going to be our new water treatment plant supervisor. He's gonna start October eleventh. That was um, just to put it in perspective, that position has been open since March. So. So great news that you found somebody local to accept the mission. Last but not least, for beginning the twenty twenty four strategic climate process for public works, that's it.
Did you say Tracy to retire retire long?
No, uh September thirtieth is her last week. We have a retirement party. And once I'm down, we'll get pizza tomorrow and be tomorrow.
So I'm gonna be in here?
Yep.
Always good, that's it.
Yeah, that's, we have, we have a retirement party for Tracy tomorrow.
Is it always just like a, we go to a team room and stuff?
We didn't open it to the public, it was staff. I'm sure she would love for you to swing by and say something, yeah.
Yeah, no, much.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Um I'm happy to report that we have hired a new permit tech. Mission. She will be starting October first and she will be participating in our. Professional Service Day this coming Thursday as well, at least for the first half of the day. So it'll be a nice opportunity to get to know her better. Her name is Barbara Corello. She will also be doing a training next week with both Christian and Amy. In Spokane for Permit Trex, so that's our online permitting system. It's a two day training. So I will be the only one in the office, so um we'll we'll limp through. Uh the following week, Amy will be in training for three days as well. Related to planning activities, so. Um. Definitely be a little shorter handed uh the first couple of weeks here. At the end of the month in October, we do have a hearing with the hearing examiner. Uh currently, there are scheduled a few B and B applications of variants. And a um. and a, um, educational facility. So it'll be a more comprehensive hearing on the thirty first, ten A M. If you want to book some time to follow along, it should be, uh, a good one to learn from. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're ready to begin. We've got three special, um, sessions that we need to go in and out of. The first one is a closed session under R C W. That's the bad news. There's three. The good news is, oh, they're all gonna be quit. I promise. Uh, first one is R C W forty two thirty, one forty four. Being wages from collective bargaining will lead us into a closed session for ten minutes. Um, and no potential, no action will be taken after that. So if somebody would want to move that, I'll make a motion to move into closed session. Jason moved, Sharon seconded, all in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously. We will ask people to.
Can we turn the thermostat back? Do we have a, can we, any senses on the temperature of this chamber?
It's not within our control. That's about very little control, which we have very little control.
All right, I'm losing, I'm stripping down. I'm sweating.
Seventy three degrees.
Seventy three.
Unfortunately, if we open a door, it actually turns on the heat. So.
So good for a minute.
You want some coffee?
But we'll just do, yeah. So we're back out, we're now recording, and now we're ready to go into item two of our three, um, which is property selection, site or acquisition executive session, R C W forty two, three O, one, ten, one, B. And again, just recess for ten minutes, um, and no action to follow. So it'll be from nine thirty to nine forty.
Do that again.
Okay. Okay.
I seconded Sharon.
Sharon moved, all in favor. It passes unanimously.
Now I can press.
Now you can. Sure, we've, we've come back out, we're recording.
No, we need, yeah, we got one more.
We've got under, uh, an executive session under R C W forty two, thirty, one, ten, one, one. And that's pending litigation. Will recess the executive session for ten minutes with no action to follow. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Marco moved and seconded, all in favor, let me see your hands. All right, we will go in at nine forty. I'm gonna say nine forty so that we can get out at nine fifty.
All right.
Out, out of. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Move by Ann, seconded by Zeke. That's what I'm saying. All in favor, let me see your hands. All right, thanks for.
See you in two.
See Oktoberfest mobiles night.